All right, we're ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, and this is the City Council's work session. I'm calling the meeting to order and giving notice that the City Council may vote to go into executive session for consultation with our attorneys for any item that is listed on tonight's agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Present.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
All right. Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would be my honor. Please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under ground and invisible but to the
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, next up is open call to the public, and this allows the public to address the council on any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda. And because whatever you're going to talk to us about is not on the agenda, we can't answer questions or ask you questions. And you have three minutes, and there's a timer here. And first up, Matt, you are here. Yeah, okay, and you have all of these people who are sitting with you are with you as well? All right, so you have 10 minutes.
Hello again, Council. Vayron Ice Mayor. You're going to have to forgive me, I just put this together a couple hours ago. So it might be being a little back and forth, so just bear with me. I'm here today because Saturday I had two police officers come to warn us about the enforcement of the party ordinance with the noise. It's with a heavy heart I decided today that I needed to come here and speak my mind about it. It's been about six months since we've had this issue. We've had no problems in the past. And it's really surprising that at the slowest time of the year for my bar, it suddenly just came back up again. Like I said, just bear with me while I get through this. I want all of you of council to know that I don't blame you for any of the problems we've been having at Southside and that we've been having over the last six years. For the longest time, I have thought the city was against me. But now I just might believe, or I believe it just might be a couple individuals that might have, you know, something against our business. That being said, I want you to know that when I showed up at the judge consideration for Mary Ann Sullivan, your own city attorney, Sterling Solomon, was there. And she did, and he said that everything that she has done has been direct from the council. So everything that I've included in these packets prior to that meeting has directly been from you, from what I've been told from your city attorney. I hope you understand that I'm not trying to cause any problems. I just want to understand what's going on and protect my business. So, oh. This box of documents is filled with information pertaining to my business and over the, with the problems over the past couple of years. This is just the documents that are pertaining to my business itself. I have three more cases of everything that's been going on with the City Council, the noise ordinance, and everyone else involved. A lot of this, a lot of documents are left out. Ms. Sullivan is an attorney for the police. And I talked to the deputy city manager, and she informed me that a lot of stuff were, was withheld because she's an attorney for the police. And it wouldn't be public record. I hope one day these will be revealed as well. So, like I said, bear with me. To go over the pages that I gave you. Starting on page one, I purchased noise-canceling blankets I'm putting up on Wednesday to further decrease noise. After this weekend, I spent another thousand dollars to try and make this go away. With lawyer fees and everything else I've had to spend, I've estimated that about 10% of my annual income is going to try and work with the city and Candace Ryan. The city also wastes many tax dollars with these discussions and police intervention daily. When is Candace Ryan going to do her part and also contribute to trying to solve this problem? Between Craig and I, we have dumped thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. The city, I know they spent $30,000 on a noise study that was dismissed because it didn't fit the narrative, and we got rid of the Despereaux readings. The next package, it's three pages, is our own city manager trying to copy the Scottsdale noise ordinance for our city. Are we not willing to put in the work as a city to create our own noise ordinance? NAU is .3 miles away from my bar. Arizona State University is over six miles from Scottsdale. There's a 2,100% difference in the space between the colleges comparatively between Flagstaff and Scottsdale with ASU and NAU. How can we copy a noise ordinance from Scottsdale for Flagstaff when it's not even comparable? Why weren't we looking at the Tempe noise ordinance, maybe Mill Avenue, to kind of discuss and go from there? This is a college town. Let me get through this real quick. I've also attached a message where the police pulled out of my fundraiser that was for their own police department. And it says that having the fundraiser at Southside Tavern raised some concern amongst the chief and command staff. I was told they didn't want to choose sides. It's pretty sure that, for me, that that's choosing a side right there. The next emails I've included are between, you know, our chief of police and Mary Ann Sullivan. Talking about the noise ordinance, the calls to the service, all they say is intriguing. And the next email says, this is from our deputy chief of police Colin, saying he didn't see anything that was unusual about our calls. Didn't see anything offhand, but he's going to dig deeper on it. Why are we digging deeper into things when there isn't a problem? I don't understand. We're not doing this to other bars. It's just mine. It's consistently just mine. If you look into these emails, it'll even say "Southside Noise Problems," "Southside This," "Southside Tavern." There's not, there're not, there isn't a bar ordinance. It's Southside ordinance. And it's consistently talked through all the emails. I've done probably 20 records requests over the last two years, and it's always pertaining to my business. So how can we sit here and say that I'm not being targeted? I'm not being harassed. People aren't retaliating against me for things that I haven't really done. If you look through the records of all the other bars in town, you're going to find people that are drinking underage, fake IDs, fights, assaults, homicide. We talked about that two city council meetings ago. I haven't had any of that bar. No police reports will you ever find someone drinking underage, any fake IDs, anything like that. And if there is, or if there's anyone being over served, we call it in. I welcome to you to look at my police reports. You will not find any wrongdoings at my bar. You can look at other police reports for other bars, and they have issues. How come we're sacrificing so much of our time on this issue when I am actually one of the bars trying to do things right in the city? I'm doing fundraisers, doing all these different things. I come here and I speak to you about problems with the city and how we can make things better. But all I get is just constant, I want to say harassment for trying to do the right thing. I've tried so hard to be a part of the city and embrace everyone around me. I partner with local businesses and try and help people in the community. But I have to put the money I put away to try and help the community towards attorney fees. Going on to the next page here. I think I already talked about that. I listened to the city council meeting on, I believe it was June 10th, with Chief Connolly talking about how he was understaffed and problems with having to allocate people downtown and different problems going on. Meanwhile, two weeks later, I have people sitting outside my bar for a noise ordinance problem. They answered my bar at 12:58, the ordinance doesn't start till 1:00, saying that they entered the residence's house, which they're supposed to do per the ordinance. So they preemptively went into a house before the ordinance started and then came in and gave me a warning and turned down the music. It just, it just doesn't all add up to me. You can see how it just, it just feels like I, I'm not getting my own justice. The police, the council, the government, they also work for me as well. I don't know why we are catering to two individuals who bought a house behind a bar in an alley next to a homeless shelter and complaining that I'm the problem with their kids. So I did some research. Chief Connolly said he has 45 patrol, patrol officers for the whole city. Let's say on average, they work five days a week. That means, on that day, Saturday, at 1:00 in the morning, he was using about 6% to 6.5% of our police force against me for something that I hadn't actually committed yet. I hope you see where I'm going with this. I don't think that council has, for the longest time, like I said, I thought that there was, there's people out to get me. Jim McCarthy did a lot of damage to me. Someone from my staff had to call my mom and take me home so I could calm down from this whole situation, and mentally, it's taken a huge toll on me. So with the damage that Jim McCarthy did, yeah, for a while, I thought it was council. But now I'm looking that maybe there are other people involved after looking at these emails and seeing that you, that you council weren't involved in it, and there were some very specific people. And one thing I found very interesting, after I spoke against Mary Ann's judge consideration, she was just denied last week. One week later, I have the police at my door of my business. And we have it on record, and I requested the body cam footage, that they were, they were just doing what they were told by the chief of police and Mary Ann Sullivan. So I hope you guys understand that I'm not trying to cause any issues. I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. It's been going on for years and years and years. And this is our slowest time of the year, and I've had no problems for seven months. And how come this, this one week after that, that happens, that I, that I'm getting this coming back out of nowhere? Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Stephen Poor.
Ray of sunshine. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen. I'm here this afternoon to, to bring a few topics together. If we go back, take a look at what's going on in your retail sales here and your taxes you're collecting in your retail sales. The last four months, you're, you went from a positive 3% relative to plan in December to a minus 2. That's a 5% swing. Things are softening up out there. Things are not, aren't well. So just FYI. You probably hear that nationally too, but it is happening locally if you look at your monthly reports. Number two, you know, I understand later this week where we may be talking to the two finalists for the economic development. Economic development in this town is in difficult shape. Since 2014, we lost four of the top 10 businesses. They haven't been replaced. Businesses in town grew, but you haven't added anybody substantial since then. That's a long time. In 20, in 2013, you filed a 100-year plan for water. Every 10 years, you're supposed to update that. That's 2023. That hasn't been updated. Interesting. You, you might want to look into that. When you start taking a look at business development, then you start thinking about minimum wage law. I reported to you, or a report I did, looking at the minimum wage law since it was enacted in 2015. The restaurant and the hospitality business in this town lost 20% of their jobs. Those are new, those are jobs for kids coming into the workforce. Those aren't people trying to make a living, per se, hopefully, for very long. But we're, we're at a really bad disadvantage. $3 minimum wage, higher than the state average. You wonder why we're not attracting businesses. I don't. You've got to be careful in what you're going to start spending money on. I've been going to the budget retreats for three years. At one of those retreats, a billion dollars of estimated and desirable projects were put on the board. You haven't finished, I don't think, one of them. And you don't have the funds to go forward to finish a number of the, of the plans you've picked up already. For example, I think one of the council people mentioned, there's a carbon neutrality plan projected to cost 600 million. You haven't spent $5 million or $10 million on that, and what do we got left? We don't have too many years left on that either. Be careful on how you're spending this, our money. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a review of the draft agenda for next week, July 1st. Council, do you have anything, any questions or comments about the agenda? Yes, please, go ahead.
When it comes to the fair item, I, it states that I was interested in, or not, yeah, not the fair item, but the council discretionary fund. It states that I was interested in something that revolved around Joe Montavo, but it was actually the market of dreams. Just a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, moving down to item number six, June work anniversaries.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Shannon Anderson, your senior deputy city manager. Here to present for you today are June work anniversaries. So to kick us off, we're going to start with our first year anniversaries. Currently have individuals in economic vitality as well as engineering, management services, water services, the police department, public works. All celebrating human resources, all celebrating their first year anniversary. So here's a list of the employees' names and what role they serve on behalf of our organization. Moving on to our five-year work anniversaries, our first is Jonathan D'Amico. He is our systems administrator as part of our information technology team. We also have Ken, Kenneth Ferguson. He's a project manager out at our landfill, so he works in public works. In our 10-year anniversaries, we're celebrating Craig Zanetto. He's part of our economic vitality division. He serves as their economic development administrator. Also, David Peterson, who I'm sure you recognize, being in front of you with Interbasin and a lot of other great projects. He's a project manager, senior lead within our engineering team. Also celebrating 10 years, we have Matthew K. Kurt, also part of our information technology division, serves as an IT manager. Also, we have Alexandra Panida. She's an evidence technician with our Flagstaff Police Department. And then transitioning to our 20-year work anniversaries, we have Colin Chalfor, who is one of our fire captains. And then moving on to 25-year anniversaries, we have Jason, who's one of our water service operators. He's a level four. And this is what they had to share with us when they talked about Jason and his service to our organization and community. They've stated he's a steady hand and a dependable resource with his years of experience. He's embraced advancements in technology as we've migrated to city works based on workflow for assets other than meter chargeouts. He's embraced the use of the meter app for service material identifications and meter locations. This will be the second year in a row for testing the most fire hydrants. Congratulations, Jason, on that. His knowledge and advice on how to do things is utilized frequently by his coworkers. What a great asset he is to our organization. And then going on to our 30 years, we have Todd George, also a fire captain with our fire department. And what they had to share with us about Todd is that during his past 30 years, he's been involved with all aspects of the fire department. Early in his career, he managed various programs, including BVEALs and all the keys on our fire engines to gain access to emergency scenes. As an engineer, he was instrumental in implementing a driver course, which he's continued to take on as a captain. He's also been part of the driving portion of the engineer's promotional process. He continues to train and develop engineers and acting engineers. He's been a Flagstaff Fire Department Special Operations Team member for the last 15 years. As a captain, Todd is training captains and a program manager for the Wildland Call Out Program. He's safe, he's honest, he's hardworking, and he brings quick wit and humor to many situations. Todd embodies the selflessness, sacrifice, and devotion to our community that's made the Flagstaff Fire Department great for years. So I know Jason and Todd couldn't join us today, but I think it's a great opportunity to be able to celebrate their extended time with our city family here. So congratulations to both Jason, Todd, and the others who are celebrating their milestones this month. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As everyone knows, I like to highlight one of the folks that are celebrating their milestone anniversaries. And this month, it's going to be Craig Zanetto. Mr. Zanetto, we have worked together for close to that full decade. And watching you start off as an assistant and working your way up, being there for me in times where, you know, I needed some guidance and other times when I just needed some assistance, and other times when I just needed a friend, and also being there for you in that capacity has enriched my life greatly, my friend. Happy that you're still here for 10 years, and I hope to see you here for another 20.
All right, next up, we have our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Through amendment, we included an add-on to the report, and we'd like to address that. That as a first item. And that is now 7A, which is discussion and direction on a letter of opposition regarding the sale of public lands as outlined in the One Big Beautiful Bill Act. And Sarah is going to guide us through this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So just a quick item for you today. Staff received a request from the mayor to issue a letter of opposition from the council related to a provision for the sale of public lands that was included in the current budget reconciliation bill that's going through Congress. This provision was introduced by Utah Senator Mike Lee, who is the chair of the Energy and Natural Resources Committee. Under that provision, over 2 million, I've heard also 3 million acres of public land would go up for sale across the western states. Today, however, we learned that the Senate's parliamentarian ruled that the provision cannot move forward because it, you know, as part of the budget reconciliation bill, it needs to be related to budget or revenue, and it's not. So. So that is some good news. However, Senator Lee tweeted today that despite this ruling, he continues, or he plans to revise his provision and keep trying to move forward. It won't be under the budget reconciliation bill, which means he won't be able to move forward with a simple majority. He will need 60 votes. So. Given the changing nature of this, we thought it would still be good to have this letter on hand and send it to our representatives just so they know where the city stands in case this does come back in the future. So we have before you a letter that we've drafted, and this highlights Flagstaff's specific concerns with this provision related to the very unique and special public lands that surround Flagstaff, the importance of these lands for our identity and local economy, and then also the impact that a change like this could have on our natural resources and infrastructure. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, just for, I was curious, when I've been seeing this all over social media, if this does move forward at some point, does that include, like, our national parks?
So the original version did not include national parks or wilderness areas. Today, Senator Lee tweeted that if he does move forward with the plan, it would also not include Forest Service lands. I believe he specified now it would only include BLM lands within five miles of a population center, but again, that's from a tweet. So. But yeah, the original version did not include national parks.
Okay, good. And then he's saying, moving forward, he will add also our National Forests. Great, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned the name of the bill that it came from. What was that again?
It's formally called the One Big Beautiful Bill Act. It's formally called the One Big Beautiful Bill Act. And that's the budget reconciliation.
I really appreciate that, only because, and forgive me, but I thought that was just a play that the media was putting on the bill. I didn't realize that was an official government document.
That is the official title.
Name from our federal government. Thank you.
Counsel member House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for the presentation. In terms of keeping this on record for use as it's necessary, are we proposing just amending some of that language then and just switching that up for whatever or however this comes back? Okay.
Yeah, agreed. And this, of course, is a work session, so we're hoping just to get your direction today and your general support, then we can tweak the letter however needed and bring it back as a consent item for formal approval or ratification.
And let me clarify, but we're still talking about sending it to our senators.
Correct. We'll send this version to our senators today and then put it on a consent agenda for retroactive approval. If it comes back in the form of a new bill or a new provision, we can tweak and then get your approval of that as well.
Yes, nodding all around. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, please.
I'm so glad this came forward in front of counsel. I think it's absolutely imperative that it had, that it receives wide support. It sounds like there's unanimous support here in counsel. I think that's what our public wants to hear from us. I think this is an existential threat to Flagstaff's character and aesthetic and zeitgeist. And I'm really glad that we're in lockstep here. And I want to give kudos to our state, well, our senators, our US senators, and the part of the contingency of the congressional delegation excluding Eli Crane that is supportive of our end goals here, which is to protect public lands. We've been protecting these lands for 250 years and longer. And it's absolutely unconscionable to me to think that this would land on our desk and on our generation and we would, we would blow this so badly. So, thank you to the public for making all those calls. Thank you to everyone for holding our feet to the fire. And it is an honor and a privilege to be up here to be able to represent those thoughts and feelings here at the dais from the City of Flagstaff. And I know that I'm not alone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah. I might have you stick around for a bit. Counsel, also in the report, and it's a pretty brief report. You have some updates from the fire department. Mostly, you're copied here on some informational outreach regarding wildfire preparedness. Couple of links for you if you want to access those at your leisure. Also, a quick update from the police department, Public Works. I will note in the update from Public Works, a photo showing the removal of concrete barriers from the Fort Valley Road by Northwood Apartments. Pretty exciting to see some flood mitigation work come to completion. I know there's a lot on that topic, but we just focused on this one project. Also, thanks to Scott Overton and others for having a little session regarding the Joe Montavo STEM Education Community Center. Thank you very much for that. And in staying with the theme of employee recognition, we, I put in a pretty large segment here regarding an award that was recently received by our city clerk, Stacy Salzburg. This is the Mary Jo Jenkins Leader of the Year Award. This is a singular award that is, that is given out each year to one, a member of our extended leadership team. Quite a few members of that team in total. But each year, we single out one person. This is a pretty prestigious award. There's a lot of thought that goes into it. There's a lot of history behind the award. I won't get into that now, other than to note that this is colleagues recognizing the efforts of their fellow colleagues. This is true leadership. It was, we think, a big surprise for Stacy when she was given this award. We did a really good job of keeping it secret, although we did have her family in the audience that they were able to participate in this wonderful event which happened last week. We always like to bring these items up to the dais as well and share them with you as our elected body. So with that, we hastily put together some little video here. I might ask Sarah to cue, well, first I'm going to ask Stacy to come down so we can all have her up front with this nice award. Oh, we are so off cue. There will be another opportunity for applause and then maybe we can all stand in unison. I'd like to hear her. Like they do it at the baseball stadiums, right? So we do have a video, and I want to give thanks to Amanda for helping to edit this video last minute. This is very brief, just a couple of minutes. But it kind of shows off Stacy and all the other, there are a few of the previous recipients of this award as well. It's kind of cool. Thanks.
Hello, Team Flagstaff. It's great to be with you again today. We wanted to talk a little bit about our recognition each year of our leaders with the Mary Jo Jenkins Leader of the Year Award. Mary Jo worked in management services as the director at the time of her passing. And she's remembered and honored by the many leadership traits that she exemplified throughout her time with the City of Flagstaff.
Integrity.
Professionalism.
Dedication.
Accountability.
Problem solving.
Ethics.
Empowerment.
These are the qualities that are held by the individuals who have won this prestigious award each year. And that is certainly the case with our newest recipient. A few years ago, the city clerk's office was a section reporting directly to the city manager's office. Over time, it became its own division, now under the title of Communication and Civic Engagement. That title is fitting when you consider the bolstered efforts for public outreach that have occurred utilizing multiple communication platforms, advising our citizens on important items such as flood mitigation measures or capital projects throughout the city, or issues of high interest that may be coming to the council dais. Our citizens can easily participate, either virtually or in person at our weekly council meetings, now live streamed on YouTube. The benefit of conducting our city council meetings utilizing these technological advances was in fact the topic of a capstone project for a graduate program at NAU successfully completed by our city clerk when she received her master's degree in public administration in 2021. Amazing accomplishments, amazing qualities, and amazing individual. Would you please join me in recognizing our 2024 Mary Jo Jenkins Leader of the Year, Stacy Salzburg?
You have three minutes.
I guarantee you I will stay under that. So, thank you, Greg, City Manager's Office, for this incredible offer, honor. I am very truly humbled that I was selected for this. I didn't get to work very long with Mary Jo, but she was definitely somebody that made an impact, not only on this organization, but in the small time that I worked with her on myself. I want to really recognize that this award isn't all about me. It really is a reflection of all of the amazing people in Team Flagstaff that I get the privilege of working next to every single day. I can't express enough gratitude to those who have supported me, encouraged me, pushed me, and helped me find such a meaningful commitment in public service. So thank you again. I really appreciate this.
I think we'll end it with that one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. All right, next up, we have the Flagstaff Airport Triennial Full-Scale Exercise After Action Report and Improvement Plan Update.
See if I can find, oh, there we go. I knew I put it down here this afternoon, so we'll start. All right. Hi, Mayor and Counsel, Stacy Brecklin-Aggs, Emergency Management Director. We're excited to be here to present our after-action and improvement plan. As you recall, we hired City EM Partners a while back, a consulting firm, to update our airport emergency master, our emergency, airport emergency plan and help us plan and coordinate our triennial full-scale exercise. So, Operation Ready Flag in 2024 was held on Monday, September 9th, 2024, at the Flagstaff Airport on the de-icing ramp. It was one of our largest-scale events in the state since 2018. And it's a requirement that we do every three years at our airport. It was a successful event. We had, we had the kickoff meeting in March, so based on the timing of when we picked that we wanted to do this in September, which it needed to be completed by, it was a really short time for the core planning team to, to work on this. We spent many, many hours doing this. And so you could see kind of the core planning team. A number of them are here. I know, I saw Vince in the back with Guardian. PD Fire, Coconino County EM is on the line. And we had our EM partners that were critical in helping us coordinate this event. So it was very successful. We had 26 other agencies that were involved in this day, so that helped us with the planning. And they're in the improvement plan, which is here. We did not have it as part of the packet. There is some information that is sensitive, so if you do want a copy of it, we ask that you get it from Brian Gaul, our airport director. The other part of this plan that's, I wanted to highlight real quick is that on the triennial full-scale exercise, we knew that we needed EM partners' assistance and we needed subject matter experts that do these type of triennial exercises. So they were able to find two excellent candidates. They're also on Gil and Christopher. And they were our subject matter experts that were helping us with the planning effort and conducting the full-scale exercise. So it's, it's really, really nice to have them as, as a partner with us to help plan this event. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Brian. And we have a team of people that will be going through the slides and presenting to you.
Thank you, Stacy. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel, Brian Gaul, Airport Director. As Stacy mentioned, this was a very large emergency response exercise for the airport, probably the biggest in our history. Somebody who's spending a little bit of time talking to you about the exercise process, how we arrived at this exercise and what exactly we were testing for. So to start with, airports with scheduled air carrier service, served by aircraft with more than 30 seats, are what are considered, are governed by the Federal Aviation Administration under Title 14 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 139. Essentially, that certification is required by the FAA to be maintained by any of those airports that are serving those larger commercial aircraft. Now, that Part 139 certification really, it's really detailed. It covers a lot of different territory. It's everything from what the pavement markings on the runway look like, what size of the runway is, how we store fuel on the airport, all the way down to the airport emergency plan that Stacy alluded to earlier. Now, as part of that airport emergency plan, we are required every three years to conduct a full-scale emergency response exercise that simulates an incident with an aircraft similar in size to the commercial aircraft that we see service with in Flagstaff. In our particular case, our exercise was designed to include a response to what we call an Alert 3. Now, at airports, there are a series of airport alert codes that let the aircraft rescue and firefighting team know what type of incident they might be dealing with just from the code itself. So an Alert 1 would be a minor, an aircraft experiencing minor trouble, maybe an engine that sounds rough, but something where you might expect a safe landing. Even so, with an Alert 1, we're going to stage resources to be available in case the incident develops further. But that's the, Alert 1 is being the most minor of the three alert categories. Alert 2 would be an aircraft experiencing major difficulties, where a crash or other incident is going to be more likely. And Alert 3 is where an aircraft has either crashed on or near the airport or a crash is imminent. So in this particular case, we were simulating an Alert 3, an aircraft incident that resulted in a mass casualty incident. The other portion of, the other major component of the exercise was to transport patients to Flagstaff Medical Center, both via ground ambulance and area ambulance, as well as standing up support from the Coconino County Emergency Operations Center and coordinating through that Emergency Operations Center. And Stacy mentioned that exercise was conducted in September of last year. I'm going to spend a little bit of time going over what the exercise scenario was to set up some further discussion. So under the exercise scenario, it was late summer. Weather was hot and dry with a little bit of wind going on. In the scenario, there was a simulated wildfire in the area that resulted in heavy smoke conditions in and around the airport with very limited visibility. Now, the incident starts with a military aircraft carrying 40 military personnel coming up to support wildfire operations in the area, notifying the Flagstaff Air Traffic Control Tower of an emergency with trouble with their instruments, trouble seeing the runway. With the simulated incident, as Stacy mentioned, the aircraft would eventually crash on the runway and come to rest on our de-icing pad, at which time the Flagstaff Air Traffic Control Tower would sound a crash alarm that we have that notifies the firefighters in our aircraft rescue and firefighting station. And that starts the incident and, and the testing of the objectives that Daniel's going to be going over in just a minute here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Daniel to talk a little bit more detailed about the specific objectives we're trying to test within that incident.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel, Daniel Kelly, Emergency Program Manager. So core capabilities, these core capabilities came from the National Preparedness Goal, which is published under the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA. And there is 32 core capabilities. And these core capabilities are built as a framework to assess and build response that the nation will find themselves responding to any type of threat and hazard that we may face. Out of the 32, we found nine fit are what we wanted to test and were applicable. Capability 1, this is about testing our fire personnel. Our personnel, our flag fire, our Highlands Fire Personnel, on how they will manage an Alert 3 to a crash at the airport. Capability 2, same fire personnel, how they handle a mass casualty incident. An aircraft goes down, how they're going to handle the rescue operations of entrapped passengers on the plane. And then Capability 3, we wanted to test PD on how they're going to perform on-scene site security, because they are tasked with securing that perimeter, because all crashes are essentially crime scenes. So they have a duty to make sure that the scene is secure. Capability 4, the operational coordination. How is the entire unified command structure going to operate? Is it going to operate as an incident command structure or is it going to be unified? And then what positions are going to be built out? What positions are the incident commanders going to delegate out to another person to handle? Which ones are they going to take on? So we wanted to kind of gauge the training and how they'd handle that. Capability 5, situational assessment. How are we going to keep the communication flowing going? Because the PIOs, PIOs need to be informed, the EM needs to be informed, and also the elected need to be informed. So how do we keep that information flow going? Capability 6, we wanted to test FMC, who was in the back, back there, on how they will handle a large surge of patients coming up to their ER. And also with Guardian, how they're going to transport those patients. Capability 7, our critical transportation. The airport, depending on where the crash is, they have to also continue with normal operations. How do they get back to being a normal-running airport? They still have to notify NTSB, FAA, all the normal operations. Capability 8, PIO and warning, a public information warning. How do we get that information out to the public to stay away from the area? How do we get information out to our decision-makers? And Capability 9, operational communication. How are we going to handle this? Are we going to operate off one frequency, multiple frequencies? And how does dispatch be involved? So there is five objectives with a lot of sub-objectives. I am not going to. I am not going to bore you to death to read every single one of these, so I'll just kind of highlight as we go through and just pick out a few of the subs. So, Objective 1, Emergency Response Alert 3. This is targeted at fire personnel, police personnel, on how they would operate. So, bullet number one is how they're going to respond to an Alert 3 aircraft incident on the ramp. And then, the contact of fire operations. Are they going to merge? Are they going to operate a silo? What are they going to do? So, we want them to form as one unit. And then, obviously, the mass casualty incident, MCI. You're going to hear that a lot, because this is... Tests the MCI capability, the chaos, the stress that it puts on the on-scene personnel, how they're going to perform. Objective 2, we wanted to test the incident command on how it's going to operate. Is it going to become a unified command? And then, also, they need to be able to establish a staging area, manage the resources that are in the staging area, and then pull them in at the applicable time and assign them. During all chaos, this gets sometimes lost, but we wanted to make sure that we had the capability to continue. And then, we also wanted to test our interoperable communications. How do we all talk to each other? Because we have Highlands Fire, we have Flag Fire, we have ARF, which is Airport Rescue Firefighters. We have PD, we have EM, we have county, we have other regional greater GFR fire resources. How are we going to communicate on the radio? Objective 3, this was for FMC. They wanted to test how they're going to do patient tracking, their mechanisms up there, see if their protocols are in guidance. Then, Guardian wanted to test their interoperable communications as well. Then, they wanted to conduct disaster registration in the chaos, right? All the flooded patients, how are they going to keep track who's coming, who's going? Objective 4 was targeting Alert and Warning. It was to test the emergency notification system to Alert 3, all the way from crash to alert phone to dispatch to send out a rave notification. And then, obviously, whenever you have information you need to collect, analyze, verify, compile, and disseminate the information, that information needs to be done in a timely manner and include who it needs to go to. Objective 5, this was for the county emergency operations. They wanted to test their EOC. They wanted to handle the flood of requests that would come from such an incident, test out their logistics. They wanted to utilize the county's incident management system to maintain situational awareness and maintain logistics. So, with any exercise, you want to walk away with some strengths, of course, right? You want to have some, "We did good here." But majority of the time, what you really want to walk away with is a lot of areas for improvements, because if you do a large-scale exercise like this and you walk away with very little to improve upon, you didn't really test anything, because nothing ever really goes right how you plan. So, some of our top three strengths is the successful transfer of command. So, initially, how it works is the ARF takes initial command, because fire resources are inbound. And then, there was seamless coordination between handing off that ARF captain to the first arriving BC, which was a Highland-fired BC, and then how that BC then incorporates the rest of the command structure. That BC then incorporated in the first responding lieutenant, police lieutenant, into the command structure, so then went to Unified Command Structure. And then, we walked away with a good strength of the fire mutual aid system. The GFR region came out in full, as you guys, most of you guys were there to see. It shows that they train, they communicate often. There was no turf wars, no anything. It was just a seamless response, so hats off to the fire community. And then, FMC, their surge plan proved to be pretty critical in maintaining the large influx of patients, because not only did they have the influx of patients from the exercise, they still had normal operations up there. So, that ER was already pre-tapped out, and then we tapped it out even further. So, that was a huge strength. All right. So, our meats and potatoes. Our areas for improvements, the flag ARF personnel, the dual responsibilities that they have to perform as ARF fire and as airport operations, that created some challenges, and Brian will get into more of that at a later time in the presentation. The second biggest one was the patient tracking. Fire units were overwhelmed. The start of triage tags was implemented late, so there was kind of a missing gap in patient tracking. Radio communications. We only operated off a single radio frequency instead of branching out into multiple different frequencies, which proved to be confusing and clogging up the nets. So, we work on that. And then, I'll toss it over to Brian.
Thanks, Daniel. So, as Daniel mentioned, that one of the areas we noted that we're going to try to make some improvements in or address some of the challenges was in the split duties between our aircraft rescue and firefighting, or ARF personnel, who also are our airport operations personnel. Now, we provide what's called ARF Index B coverage. What that means is we have two ARF apparatus, two ARF fire trucks, that are available to respond to emergencies 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Now, the Federal Aviation Administration, their coverage for aircraft rescue and firefighting is based on the amount of fire suppressant material available, not on the number of personnel available. So, our... So, that's where the two trucks comes from. We have those two vehicles that are on shift at any given time. Now, to man those two vehicles, we have three personnel that are generally on shift at any given time, but our minimum staffing is two, so two people to operate two trucks. So, if our usual shift of three people, if somebody's out of training, or somebody's out sick, or somebody's on vacation, we typically operate with two people on shift, so one person per truck. That's a little bit of an unusual situation, having our ARF team be also our airport operations team. So, airport operations, as a reminder, are really all the things that keep the airfield running. So, everything from snow removal to maintenance of the airfield itself, the airfield lighting, inspecting the airfield pavement, maintaining some of the airport perimeter fence and gates, things like that, as well as things like mowing our infills, keeping the grass low to try to mitigate wildlife on the airport, and other wildlife hazard mitigation duties. So, as part of this... Oh, sorry. I mentioned that that was a little bit of an unusual situation, in that most airports our size have moved to a place where they split those duties into two distinct teams. It's not totally unusual to have airports where they're still combined, but it's becoming more and more unusual as time goes on. The challenge that leads to is some of what Daniel alluded to earlier, and I'll go into a little bit more detail, but in this particular case, we simulated a day where we have our minimum staffing, meaning two personnel on shift, and simultaneously to... Or just before the aircraft incident occurring, a major wildlife incident happening at the airport, meaning in this case, a coyote was identified on the airfield, which is a hazard to air navigation. So, to address that, one of our ARF personnel went out in our operations truck, which is not one of the ARF trucks, it's a smaller pickup-sized truck, to drive down our service road to try to haze the coyote outside the fence, which is our typical response to a wildlife issue like that. In this particular case, that led to some challenges with Objective 1, which is what's shown in this slide, in that we had a gap between when that second ARF apparatus was able to respond to the incident versus what is mandated by the Federal Aviation Administration. So, the FAA likes to see a four-minute response time for the second truck to get to an emergency like that. In this particular case, because the person operating that truck was away from the station dealing with a wildlife issue, they had to drive back to the station first, drop off their truck, put on their fire gear, jump in that fire truck, and then respond, which pushed us past that five-to-six-minute... Or into that five-to-six-minute timeframe. So, we've identified some corrective actions for that for both the short term and the long term. So, for the short term, in cases where we are at our minimum staffing level, we're going to start responding to those airport operations incidences in our ARF truck instead of an operations truck. Now, it's a little bit challenging, and it does have drawbacks, in that we're putting wear and tear on a very expensive ARF truck. This may be not ideally suited to drive to some of the places we might otherwise be going in that operations vehicle, but for now, that's the way we can kind of close that as a stopgap measure to make sure that that response time is shorter to incidents across the airfield, because we're always going to have a person in that second ARF truck. Now, from a longer-term strategy, really, I think the solution to this is separating those ARF and operations duties into distinct teams. So, airport staff have worked to identify a plan, to stand up a dedicated operations team. We've identified that it'll require addition of about seven new personnel, to be split over shifts to provide at least 20 hours a day of coverage, 365 days a year, to allow those airport operational duties to be completed by a team that can focus on them, while a separate team is focusing on the aircraft rescue and firefighting side of the operations. To date, we have not identified a funding source for that, so that's something that we're working towards within the airport fund. Right now, we don't have the capacity for it, so we are working at some creative solutions to try to get there, because I think ultimately, that's where we're going to need to be to really address these gaps here. Now, the gap that we focused on here for the ARF response time only shows kind of half of that scenario. The other half was our inability to respond to the airport operations needs that come with an aircraft incident like this. So, as Daniel alluded, getting the airport, number one, shut down safely is an airport operations duty. So, typically, airport operations personnel are who closes the runway when there's an aircraft that's had an incident on the runway, but if they're the folks that are responding to that aircraft incident, they can't respond to the incident itself and then close the runway as a result of it at the same time. Similarly, we're supposed to notify folks like the NTSB, who are going to come out and investigate air crashes, but right now, that's something that they can't do until they're finished responding to the incident itself. So, we have worked internally to try to find some ways where the airport administrative team and possibly emergency management can help step in, try to fill some of those gaps, but it's really not where we'd like to be yet in terms of responding to the operational needs that come with aircraft incidents like this, which is why I do think that ultimately, standing up a dedicated airport operations team is what's going to be in the airport's future for ensuring that we can respond to both the incident in a timely manner and the other airport needs that occur simultaneously to that. And so, that was the biggest takeaway we had from the airport perspective, but as Daniel mentioned, this exercise really tested a bunch of other pieces within the city of Flagstaff. So, then, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Fennel, who's going to go over some of the Flagstaff Fire Department's specific objectives.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Chris Fallon with the Flagstaff Fire Department. I'm the Deputy Chief of Operations. So, what I'm going to talk to you about today is the response to an Alert 3 and the triage tag. So, just as a little bit of a background, the Start Triage System is something that we use to rapidly assess patient condition. It's based on respirations. They're either breathing, over 30 minutes, not breathing at all. They have a pulse of either no pulse or greater than 100, and then are they able to follow simple commands? And so, what that does is it sets us up into a system where we have patients that can be categorized as minor, delayed, immediate, or deceased, and that really helps us set the plan in motion for the future and what the outcome of the scene looks like. So, we have these triage tags that are on all of our trucks, and the general idea is you show up on a scene, you see multiple patients. That comes out very quickly and early, and we use those to identify the patients, so we know how many ambulances we need for transport, how many helicopters for transport, and we can notify the hospital to say, "Hey, you've got 27 immediate patients that are coming your direction." That sets a whole process in place for them to get their system set up, ready to go. So, by our crews being overwhelmed whenever they first got there, the first arriving engine shows up after the ARF crew does, there's some fire in the fuselage, they're pulling hose, they're putting out that fire, they've got their full packs, their masks, their... All of their gear on. Very difficult to get in there and take care of some of that triage stuff, but they did it verbal, and by not putting the tags on them, we had patients that were triaged probably three to four times before they ever left the scene. They were handled a lot, they were triaged a lot, same questions. So, that's one of the things that we saw for the corrective action is work on doing that training with the triage tags, pull those things out more often, and make sure everybody's tied in with those. Objective number one, just to continue on with the MCI treatment area. So, we've identified it's a mass casualty incident. We say we have people inside the plane. We're moving them out. People that were walking wounded on the outside, they moved to a completely different area that was isolated away from the hazard zone just to keep them a little bit more safe. And what that did was it changed where our treatment area was at. We had one that was underneath the wing. Initially, it was under the wing that was on fire, and the group decided that wasn't a good place to put it, so they moved it over to the other side, and then just a little bit of confusion on who was doing what, what their role was, and more where people are going after they've been treated for the pickup area with Guardian. So, our corrective action on that, we want to provide an MCI and ICS refresher training for all the fire and mutual aid resources. There were some resources that were there from the Navajo Nation Fire Department that we don't get to work with very often, and so it was interesting trying to roll some of that stuff in and just see what equipment they had and how things go. And as Daniel said, you hate to plan every little detail out, because something's going to change. It always does, and so we need to be flexible, but more triage training is definitely coming up through fiscal year '26. Rolling into establishing Incident Command and Unified Command. The Incident Command got set up very quickly, right away. We rolled into a Unified Command with Highlands Battalion Chief and Lieutenant from Police Department. Very good seamless interaction. Where we found things after that is we're good at assigning three to six units. That's kind of our bread and butter. This incident, we had double that, and so whenever we have resources that come on scene and you start sending them out, we put a boss with them to look over the scene, to see what's going on, and make sure that things are moving. And we're really good about telling our units where they're supposed to go, what they're supposed to do, and we use task, location, and objective to get that through. Where we fell short on this one is we just told our bosses, "You're going to be the treatment group, and you're going to be the transport group, and you're going to be the medical group," but we didn't give them that specific information on, "Here's where we want you to go. Here's what we want you to do." So, we had a couple of bosses that were in there that were moving through, and they were trying to figure out who was doing what. Again, there was some duplication of efforts, and there was some things that didn't get done that should have been done. So, in order to take care of that, we've got that set up with reviewing our training protocols to include more Incident Command training over the one year and ongoing, and it really is to set up a bigger organization, a bigger drill that challenges our people and takes them out of the comfort zone a little bit more. Rolling into the rest of this, the single frequency, you've heard that come up a couple of times, and what that did, the bosses that I was talking to you about, the radio was so jammed up with traffic, they couldn't get their message through to who they wanted to talk to, and so we had somebody... If you can picture the airfield out there, a C-130 plane in the middle, which is a big plane. The scene is spread way apart with different groups and different functions, and one of our integral people, who is a medical group officer, is walking back and forth and bouncing around to all kinds of different places. If we would have given him a tact channel, or if the incident commander would have said, "Hey, this isn't working. Let's put you on a different channel," it would have worked out so much better. With that, though, some of the radio communication for the channel that we chose to use for this incident is not our usual response channel. We didn't want everybody on our normal channel tying up that frequency and talking on it. We wanted to save that for the real 911 calls that were going on, and so by doing that, we ended up picking a channel that not all the agencies that were responding with us had, and so to try and overcome that, we gave them one of our radios and like a five-second crash course on, "Here's how to use it. Here's what this looks like." And so, that was a little bit of a challenge from the start, so it was really good to go through that and talk about some of the communication side of it. How are we going to do this in the future? What is that going to look like? Again, you saw the list of all the other agencies that were coming in to help out, and we just need to make sure that everybody can talk and everybody knows that. The team that was evaluating the drill on how everything went recommended just set something up ahead of time, so we'll build a communication plan over the next six months and get everybody trained on that, so that if you have an incident like this, you automatically go to a channel that's dedicated, and that should help take care of that.
Objective 3 was regarding FMC. I'll just briefly cover their slides for them here tonight. So, health and medical, the gap that they found was they experienced challenges with the patient flow, from the patients from the helicopters coming into their staging area and their trauma bays. The corrective action, they're going to update their SOPs and the victim... Update their SOPs and the patients to the victim staging areas. That's going to take them six months, and it's going to be an ongoing process after that. The second gap, Flagstaff Medical Center, they kind of lost the inner security perimeter due to staffing, resource limitations. They're going to explore alternate security staffing models to help support such a large incident. They were given a... They gave themselves a timeframe of six months to ongoing to correct this issue. Objective 4, Alert and Warning. Gap, City EM was kind of forgotten about during all the chaos, so we were kind of late getting in the game. late getting in the game. Therefore, I was late sending out a rave message to the mayor and some of the other council members. Training for this to make sure everybody understands the value and the capabilities that EM brings to the table, and that way, we are brought in sooner rather than later. It's always, we, I look at it the same as Fire, it's always better to start a resource and cancel it than to start that resource way too late when action already needs to be happening. So we'll go on to continue to fix this issue, I'll go out and educate and campaign for Fire. They're big supporters, it's just chaos, moment to the moment, it just happens. Objective four, alert and warning. We had a lack of information flow from the Unified Command structure to the PIOs. PIOs were kind of left out in the darkness on a lot of stuff. The part of that was EM, we should have, I should have filled that gap. And then also, it's just Unified Command, we weren't communicating outside of ourselves. So the PIOs were clamoring for information, and we were not providing it. We are going to update our procedures, we've given ourselves one year, and that will be ongoing. Objective five, CCM, the County EM. TEMA, the state, kind of recently transitioned from Web EOC as a platform that we are all using to communicate with the state to teams. And that has been challenging to switch over to teams for this type of environment. So Coconino will continue to work with the state to familiarize themselves more and for the state to also work out some of the bugs in their system. They gave themselves six months to get this completed. Another gap that CCM notified, realized was the EOC Logistics Chief was inundated with high logistical requests from the Incident Command post, and so therefore, they need to look at their staffing models. Unfortunately, this is going to take financial backing, so this is FY '26 and ongoing, they need to, they're going to work to strengthen and to deepen their depth. With that being said, questions?
Counsel, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I was there watching, it was quite the performance. And the only thing I noticed, all these corrective actions and issues that you've all noted, were not visible by us sitting at the tent except for maybe the triage under the wing to, you know, it made sense to be out of the sun and off the hot concrete, but we saw, you know, it had to move. So my question is, you've given some timelines for corrective action, six months to a one year. We did this simulation back in November, so when does that six month start? Is it corrective action starting today, we have six months, or since November?
Councilmember, great question. First off, in your first question, that's a good thing, so that's great for us to hear. There was 17 deficiencies that we found on Objective One alone, so there's a lot of work to be done. And that six month starts when the AR was finalized, because we had to go through that entire process, now the six months about two months ago, so that clock started then.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember House.
I could add one thing to that as well, which is when we were going through our after-action report that Daniel mentioned, finalizing it, even though a lot of the objectives were set to be within six months, especially our folks at the Flagstaff Fire Department and other agencies, a lot of them had already been done. So it was within six months, but a lot of that with the head start that we had, knowing that those were going to come up, a number of those have already been corrected in various ways.
Thank you, Brian. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all very much for the presentation. I was part of this as well as a victim, which was quite an experience. I think I was in that initial group that was under that wing that was being triaged. And even just to kind of reflect what Councilmember Matthews shared, even as someone on the ground and participating through that, everything seemed to be going so smoothly, it was really a very impressive exercise. I think the only things that we kind of noted on the ground was things that you all picked up on very clearly in terms of the triaging of victims and things like that. The only other thing that I'd add is that next time, I'm going to 100% insist on being one of those helipad patients because I want to take that helicopter ride. But beyond that, I just want to extend a lot of thanks to the full team that was part of this for helping us not only to strengthen those processes amongst all those teams themselves, but also I think the act of having so many community members and folks watching on the sides and so forth involved in this is helping us all also to recognize the bigger picture of what happens when these things are all happening at once. And I think it's a really important thing for the community to have the opportunity to be part of and see how all of this works and how all of these different organizations are coordinating with each other and working together to overcome emergency situations that could arise in our community. So just very impressive work throughout, and thanks for the opportunity to be part of it.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brian, and Daniel and Chris, that was an awesome presentation. I didn't, I was not able to attend that, it was prior to me being on council, but I heard about it, and I was really interested to see how, you know, the kind of data that you were going to pull from it, and the fact that you were so vulnerable in this test and so honest with yourself impresses me, and it gives us some baselines to shoot for and some goals to try to move forward. When it comes to the conversation about the ARF team and the airport ops as well, I know that there's some challenges budgetarily, and I am eager to see what the solutions to those budgetary shortfalls are, whether it be grants or help from the city manager's office. I want to support those issues because when I went on my airport tour as a new council member, I saw that it wasn't just in an emergency that we were having some, we were having a little bit of duplicative work done by people who should be specializing in their own crafts. And while it works now currently, as the airport grows, I think the need for that is going to grow, and I'll support that need when it comes. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry. I just want to make two more comments. I can't let this conversation end without complimenting the artist who made up the victims and had bones sticking out of their legs and holes in their heads and blood dripping, and as we were eating lunch, it was really challenging because it was very, very real. I was like, oh my God, is that person real? So I just want to highlight that, and the team did a great job. But also, you know, it kind of makes me nervous about the statement of how much more personnel we need. When you and I were just on that trip for the airport conference, there was a small aircraft incident, and I just want to bring that up because I hear a lot of that, and so it's not like, oh, you know, sometime in the future, this could happen tomorrow, this could happen today, a small craft or a large craft, and we're just vulnerable that way. So I think that it is something we need to take seriously and make sure we're ensuring that we're prepared because we don't know when it's going to happen, and it was when we landed in, at our destination, we already had buzzers going off on our phones that there was an incident, so we do have to be prepared, so thank you.
I echo the kudos. I very much appreciate hearing the report after the fact. It was a fascinating exercise to take part of, and being able to hear where the shortcomings were and how you're addressing them, I think is, it's really important for us and it's important for the public to know how on top of this emergency management activity you are. So, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. And as Stacy mentioned, we do have electronic copies of that, so if anybody would like to see the full report, as Daniel mentioned, this is a brief snapshot of it, but those are available, so let us know if you'd like to see those. Thanks, everyone.
All right, next up, item number nine, Discussion of Opportunities and Considerations of Potential City Involvement in Preserving the Orpheum Theater as a Historic Community Asset for Public Benefit.
Mayor, Council, I am not doing this presentation, but I'd like to preface the presentation with two quick comments. First, and you're going to hear more about the history of this topic coming to you, but I want to just note that we started these discussions at the end of last summer. They've been good, they've been exploratory, and they have kind of grown in terms of the participants over time. I want to give some kudos to the Vice Mayor, who helped orchestrate these initial meetings and has been at the table ever since. This is a topic that we've been anxious to bring to the dais and have some dialogue with Council. Second comment I'd like to make, Council, we're receiving some emails on this, which is great, it's great to see the community response that is coming in. I did read one reference, though, today, something to the effect of, you know, let's not lose the Orpheum Theater to downtown development. So I just want to take a moment and establish on record, there is no pending development that threatens the Orpheum Theater. This is all very proactive discussion about the future of that venue, and I just want to kind of set the record straight, this is a very, this is a very forward-thinking discussion that we're going to have tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joanne to get this thing going. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Joanne Keen, Deputy City Manager. We have a team here today who will give a presentation, and then we would like to be able to answer questions at the end, if Council is okay with that. We have several folks who have been involved in this internal discussion for some time and can answer some questions. But as City Manager mentioned today, the intent is to kind of give an overview of why we're here before you today, and then get some direction from Council on what this looks like potentially moving forward. I will say, you, we don't have a lot of details in this presentation. Again, this is bringing kind of this idea or some scenario ideas to Council to get direction. So if we don't have the answers, please know that, you know, we haven't completely vetted everything, and, you know, that's why we're here today. So I'm going to start by turning it over to Lauren Clementino, who's our Historic Preservation Officer, who's going to start with some background on the Orpheum Theater.
Thanks, Joanne. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And so, first, 1911, before this building was here, or the Majestic Opera House, there was a briefly-lived egg farm on this site, and John Weatherford of the Weatherford Hotel owned the property and built this, the Majestic Opera House here in 1911. And then in 1915, on New Year's Day, under five feet of snow, the Majestic collapsed, and the building needed to be rebuilt, and a new theater, which is the Orpheum, was reopened the following year in 1916. And there's a few different dates floating around, whether it opened in 1916 or 1917, but according to our local paper, it definitely opened in 1916. And so, and this is an early photograph of what it looked like before some of the later alterations. And so the restaurant building wing that's sort of in, you know, the back on the western side, that was added in 1970. And in 1999, at that point, the Orpheum was operating as a movie theater. It abruptly closed after the movie theater company's lease ended, and then it was closed for several years and then reopened in 2002 under new ownership and after an interior remodel and sort of redesign into more of what we see today. And in 2010, the Stage Left Deli opened, and in 2015, the Sound of Flight mural by Skyblock and the Mural Mice, which you'll see in a few slides, that's prominent on the eastern side of the building, was added. And in that year, also, the Aspen Deli took over the restaurant. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Dave McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave McIntyre, Community Investment Director. I think there was one back, yeah, there we go. So a little bit of background on the venue and the discussions, background on the current ownership, Chris Scully, who is here and available to take any questions as we go, owns the structure and the building itself. Dr. Charles Smith, who is also here and available for questions and probably will be offering comments, owns the business and much of the equipment inside. So there are two separate owners within the structure. They have come forward to offer up this possibility for us to work with them to help preserve it. Some of the things that we thought were interesting for the City Council to know and the public to know as a part of this is, in the past, we have looked at the Orpheum within the Economic Development Program as an anchor for the downtown. Some of you may know that there was a development agreement that we worked with them for, that provided an incentive called the Government Property Lease Excise Tax, which was provided in order to help sustain the program and help make sure that they were able to make modifications that preserved the history and made sure it was a fully accessible venue. They did complete all their obligations under that agreement very well, and we appreciated that. And part of the reason that we entered into that, that Council chose, that particular Council chose to enter into that is because of the value that the Orpheum has provided to the downtown core over the years. We also have had a couple of different reports recently. One is the Flagstaff Arts Council Report that some of you may recall from around 2018. Another is a more recent Beautification Arts and Science Report that was accomplished within the last year or so. And in both of those reports, it was made very clear that the public feels strongly that there is a lack of venues, affordable and available venue space in the community. We know from our PROS feedback as well that there is a lack of event space that has been identified. And so one of the reasons that this is a conversation that city staff has been engaging in is the fact that it does help us to potentially answer some of the questions that are identified in those studies and by some of that public input.
Okay, so why are we having this conversation today? As City Manager mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, we were approached, Vice Mayor Sweet was involved in that discussion, we were approached by Chris Scully and Charles Smith about a potential change of ownership in the near future. And again, just following what the City Manager said at the beginning, there are no threats to development of this property, so this is, we're bringing this forward as an opportunity. We were approached by the owners to explore some options for the city to acquire the building, so at this point, we're talking about the actual physical structure. And then there was a request by the owners for the city to explore keeping the Orpheum Theater as a community asset. And again, you've seen many emails that have come in, I'm sure we have some public comment on that as well today. I did want to recognize the team that has been working on this. As the City Manager mentioned, we've been meeting for probably about a year, and just I wanted to mention that group that has been meeting kind of on and off. We've had some smaller groups that have kind of split off and had some individual meetings. But I'd like to recognize, obviously, Dave McIntyre, Heidi Hansen, Jana Weldon, Rick Tatter, Brian Suda, excuse me, Brandy Suda, Kevin Fensel, Alex Pucorelli, Michelle McNulty, Julie Komnick, and then of course, Lauren Clementino, and we're so lucky to have you on our team, so. As I said, the meetings started about a year ago, and we've had also meetings with other communities to kind of talk about what a model could look like. Communities that have acquired venues, have brought in some outside management of those venues, looked at different kind of potential revenue options and sources. Some of those communities we met with, we met with the City of Scottsdale, and then also the Scottsdale Arts Center. We've met with the City of Tucson, and then also the folks who are kind of behind the Rialto Theater and that venture. And then we've also met with creative Flagstaff as well, so done some due diligence on that front as well. So as Dave mentioned, am I doing this or you? Can't remember, I think, I think, no, I think I am. Okay. All right, okay.
We trade back and forth well, I think, right? So some of the benefits of keeping the So, some of the benefits of keeping the Orpheum as a community asset, one of which is ensuring space for the community, the nonprofits, public agencies. As was mentioned earlier, this is an identified need, something that the community has said strongly in a couple different public documents at this point. A community our size would often have a stronger arts venue and event space. Also, it does maintain a historically significant building. My understanding is that this is not, the Orpheum itself is not a part of the National Historic Register. That was a choice that the owners made at the time, but it is clearly a part of Flagstaff's history and is, of course, something that could be changed as time moved forward. This model has been used locally, as you can see here with some examples. Creative Flagstaff manages the Center for the Arts, which is a county building that Creative Flagstaff occupies and activates. Pepsi Amphitheater, also a county building that, at a vendor, activates, and Theatricos, which is a city-owned facility and in which a nonprofit functions. So this idea of the threat of losing the Orpheum Theater to other development, this may, this bullet point may have been where some of the emails were coming from, if they were reading the packet. The idea is that, is that Mr. Scully and Dr. Smith have made it clear that at some point, they would like to exit the ownership. And at that point, if the city is not able to participate, they would be forced to sell. And perhaps that's where some of that comes from. But currently, this is the conversation. They've approached us first. Would you like to go through the scenarios?
So in your packet, we have three scenarios that we've, we've laid out. And again, this was some work that was done by the team to come up with some models and some ideas of what this could look like moving forward. The first scenario is kind of a city acquisition, private management or public management scenario, where the city would acquire the venue. And through a competitive process, we would select a management arrangement, either a public or private entity, to manage the facility. Scenario two is city acquisition with district oversight. The city would acquire the venue and then create a special district. There's been talk about an arts district, but it could also be like a community facilities district, some other kind of special district. Other venues could also fall under this district umbrella, and then a possible transition to a local arts organization. The third scenario is that the city does not acquire the property, and then the owners move forward with putting the property and the business on the open market. We obviously needed to also present this scenario as well.
Thanks, Joanne. This is me again. We wanted to talk over some of the considerations related to this particular conversation. One is the timeline. We do know that Mr. Scully and Dr. Smith have financial implications, that they're working with their own particular business model. And generally speaking, the speed of government, as sometimes has been mentioned, is not incredibly fast. We also know that this type of a decision, where there is significant potential cost, potential voter involvement, could be a slow process. But at the same time, it feels like it's important for us to bring the conversation forward, so Council has a chance to weigh in and let us know if there's the ability to move forward. Another of the considerations is the management. What is the best structure to work with? We know that if you're trying to achieve a certain arts and science outcome, then potentially it's one type of nonprofit. If you're more looking to enhance venue space and be an economic engine in a downtown core, that's a very different type of management. If you want it to be overseen by the public versus a private entity, these are very different end goals. And so, helping to identify what that best structure is will be a part of research that is undertaken, should Council say that they are favorable about more, more work being done on this. Financing, obviously, we would need an appraisal to make sure that we were being good stewards of the tax dollar. And if the value is over $3 million, we would need to go to the voters. I think with a purchase of this scale, there's a good chance we would be going to the voters regardless. But there would be the requirement within the charter, there is a potential requirement for any bonding that would have to happen. And so, we know that this would likely involve going to the voters specifically with this particular question. Within the property considerations, there is existing zoning on it, which is the Central Business District. The Central Business District is one that I know everybody here is quite familiar with in terms of some of the uses that are currently existing. It does allow for retail and restaurant, it allows for commercial and professional space. It's really meant to be an active and vibrant space in the downtown. And there are a wide variety of commercial and professional uses that could be in that place. So should the property move into an open market transaction, there are a number of uses that somebody could choose to put there. Historic preservation opportunities, as mentioned, this is not currently on the National Register, but it is a significant part of Flagstaff's history. And so, the city involvement could engender the opportunity to make sure that we were preserving it in specific and professional ways. And the facility condition is definitely a consideration as well. 107-year-plus building will likely have areas that require improvement to make sure that they're meeting a city municipal standard. And there is obviously a potential cost to maintaining a building of that age and structure. So we would be needing to do a facility assessment that would delve into the condition of the building, both in terms of, well, all the different systems involved in a facility assessment. I know we do have a significant number of buildings. We've learned over time that they do have a cost to maintain, and we want to know what that cost is going to be walking in with eyes wide open. And I think this one's back to you, Joanne.
So we also wanted to present some other considerations during this discussion. And I'll kick it off, and then I want to also give the City Manager an opportunity. But one of the items we added was city needs on the horizon. So all of the items that we've talked about during the budget retreats, we've talked about the funding for public safety and the needs that we will have related to a new fire station and associated needs, which will be coming back to Council for consideration. We've also talked about the wastewater treatment plant and the 250-plus potential funding that we will need for that facility potentially moving forward. The East Flagstaff Community Library, another item, this actually will be coming to Council next week, we'll be just having a discussion on this item. And then the final, I'll go to the top, Funding for the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. And I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, Joanne. Council, at your budget retreat, I think the most recent one, we talked about a few of these. Of course, they are recurring topics. The wastewater treatment plant has been on the planning table for some time. That's on the horizon. It's always something to bring into the discussion as we talk about city needs on the horizon or out there, not-too-distant future on that one. We also spoke to the public safety needs, and specifically, it's both fire and police, but specific to fire, you know, the need for a new Fire Station 7, and with that, battalion and the apparatus that goes with that, again, on the not-too-distant horizon there. We have not talked to you about the East Library, that one's coming your way before the recess. We'll have a little discussion of that. Stay tuned. Very important, fast-moving topic, and something we want to have some discourse on. The ICCC, the Indigenous Community Cultural Center, is an item of high interest and excitement, enthusiasm throughout the community. This one, as you know, Council, came to you, came to the previous Council with a concept plan a couple of years ago. It was enthusiastically supported. This involves the old Public Works facility at Thor Park Annex, and it is a building owned by the city, a lot of property owned by the city around it, and we have a great plan. Pardon me, great concept. But the funding remains to be seen on that as well. So these are things that we always just want to bring into the discussion as reminders of everything we have going on. There's a long list of other things, but these are, I know they're of high importance to the Council, and the library is one that, again, we want to bring to the dais next week. So, thank you.
With that, I'd like to talk, discuss questions and direction, and I'll give anybody $10 if they can tell me what year those three concerts were on that slide. And Chris doesn't get to shout it out from the audience. So I'm going to ask Vice Mayor to speak to this. She's been working on this for quite some time, and I'm eager to hear her thoughts.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Joanne, you forgot to thank two very important people, yourself and City Manager. So this started, Chris Scully came to me. I have been involved with the Orpheum for 25 years, I believe, and I just feel like it is an anchor for downtown. And Chris came to me with kind of the situation explained in the presentation, and I did go to City Manager, and I said, "Look, I don't know what to do with this. I mean, it's way out of my league." And so, City Manager and Deputy City Manager Keen started forming a group, and we were having discussions. And through those discussions, you know, I started out thinking, "Well, of course, we need to save the Orpheum. I mean, it's an asset to our city that is beyond music. It's a, it's a center of community." And through those discussions, it kind of got to be, well, you know, we also have another need in our community, the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. And I brought that up months ago, saying, "What if we were to entertain an arts district and put that and the Orpheum, and maybe some other facilities into this idea?" So we have talked about that, and I think that we have a great opportunity here. I realize that there are several needs in our community, but I do believe that having our Orpheum Theater stay as a local community asset is imperative to the, the next years of our downtown. And I also think it's imperative that we get the Indigenous Community Cultural Center funded and going in our community. We have been waiting many years for that. So I wanted to give the background. I have been involved. I do not own this. We, as Council, and we as a community, definitely own this as an opportunity for the future of Flagstaff. And I would like to, you know, what we're asking tonight is to see if Council has the appetite to continue this conversation. I don't know where it's going to go, but I would hope that we see the value in, in having the Orpheum stay local in our community, in funding other projects that have been in the queue for a very long time. And I would like to see the discussion continue. And again, I just want to thank the staff and city leadership. This would never have happened without them, and taking the leap of faith that we could at least have the conversation. I see that Rose is in the audience, and I would, if you don't mind, Mayor, I would like to ask her a question. Can you come up?
Thank you, Rose. So I'm looking in the audience, and I see a lot of familiar faces, and I know they, they know a lot about the Orpheum. I don't know if they know a lot about the ICCC, and I'm wondering if you can talk about where we are in that project and, you know, what it would mean to get, get it funded and get it done.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time and the question. Those are Marjorie Clans. My name is Rose Tohee, and I am the Indigenous Affairs Administrator here at the city. And a cultural and Indigenous Community Cultural Center, that dream has started many, many years ago, I mean, decades. And we've always, community members, trying to push for that, has fallen short all these years, until just recently, with the last Council, when, and Council and leadership here at the city have found the heart to push it through and to really stand on some of the things that were important to Indigenous peoples. And so, I think that this opportunity is something that we cannot pass up. And I think that just having to go through a grueling 15 months of public outreach and public participation has proven to be something that our city hasn't gone through in the space of Indigenous Community Cultural Center. And I think also that the, in every meeting and every concept that had been put forward to Council, that piece has always come up on top and highly supported by community members. And I think that that's where we are right now. Having to go through that and having leadership and staff members work together to make sure that it happened was, was truly a heartfelt process. And where we are right now, we went through that. The final concept was also approved in December of 2022, I believe. And after that, recently, we also put out a RSOQ, and that process with procurement allowed us to see if there was a Indigenous-led nonprofit that can, that can apply for that, to make that. So we made our, the evaluation team made our decision, and we do, we have identified the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff as that nonprofit. Today, we started talks about what that agreement is going to look like. We're putting together a scope of work and, and just what we need from the city's standpoint, as well as from the Indigenous standpoint, what that agreement is going to look like and what that relationship building is going to look like. So we have started that. There's heart in that. And we are totally excited for that move and for that, for those steps. And when I think about having a center like this in our community, just as the Orpheum, you know, these are historic buildings that we're talking about. What I could say as grandma and grandpa buildings, they are part of who we are as a community, and they are one of those things that sustain us as a community. And I think that, that's important for our community to remember. I remember the Orpheum as a high school student, as one of my places to escape to when things weren't going so well, you know, at school or, or other places in my life. It was a place where it was nice to just calmly see a movie and, and eat popcorn and just find it a place of, of just escape. And having, knowing that, and knowing that this building is a spirit, has energy, and just as our future Indigenous Community Cultural Center is like that, I feel that it's important to know that, that those buildings will embrace the people who walk through it. And when I think about, in our Dina concept, our Navajo concept, is that, when I think that when we have that building, the Indigenous Community Cultural Center, is that you think about our relatives, you say, from doorway in to the, to the end, to the other side of the building and doorway out, you welcome people, you welcome relatives. When you think about a home, that's what, that's what that is. And when you have a grandma or a grandpa building surrounding you in that way, you, you think about the east side being the birth, the youth. And then, as you go clockwise, the south side represents the adolescent youth. And then the backside represents, just like in this, where you are, the adult side of people. And then the north side represents our, our elders, and how it goes full circle back to when our circle, when our elders become back to the, the east side, and how that is, the directions also represent the east side hope. to the east side, and how that is, the directions also represent the east side hope, the south side faith, and the west side love and ethics where our elders are. And I hope that those teachings from our Indigenous people will flow out to our community, because that's what we want. We want to share this building. It's not just going to be for Indigenous people. It's going to be for all our relatives here in the city and beyond. And so I hope that somehow that we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. I couldn't have said that any more beautiful than you just did. So what I'm hoping is that we can continue exploring this. And like I said, I don't know how we get to the final yes, but I believe that, I didn't even think we'd get here tonight. So here we are, and I look forward to the conversation. I know we have a lot of public comment, and I want to hear from council and see what you think. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Mayor, I can hold until after public comment.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will probably have some more after public comment. But I do want to say that Scenario Two would be the only one that I would want to move forward on. I said it at the retreat, that the ICCC has to be included in this, because as Rose alluded to, I think it's been over 40 years since the city has promised this cultural center. And I don't want to put something else in front of it, regardless of how important it is to the community. So that's a nonstarter if we don't figure out a way to make this a package deal. I don't know what that looks like. I'm not familiar at all with an arts district or a special district and how that's funded. Just doing some analysis, estimating rehab, purchase price, just in the Orpheum, I'm thinking, you know, north of $5 million. And I'm going to guess probably the ICCC too, because they're both very, very old buildings. I know, being on the liaison for the Indigenous Commission, we get all excited when a division says, "Oh, we're committed $200,000 this year to the ICCC," which sounds really big until, you know, I raise my hand and say, "So what does that get us?" "Well, you know, a study on how we can move the internet service." Like, it's not going to move the needle at all. So those will be two really big numbers. And then to come back around to some type of special district, like then to make it meaningful to be, okay, we have to do some rehab, and we have to do some work, which will probably cost, I could be way off, but I'm going to assume around $10 million. What does that look like? Is it a bond? Is it a tax? So those are things that, you know, I guess, moving forward, we would have to look at. And then there's the timing issue, yes. You know, I love hate saying the speed of government. But to find out really what this financially means, so the voters can make a good decision, and yes, I would say it has to go to the voters no matter what, because it's not just the purchase price of the building, but it's the rehab cost, and it's the cost of the ICCC rehab. But to get to that number, so we know what the ask is, I don't know what, you know, I know appraisals, commercial appraisals take a few months, and that's on a good day. And I don't know when, if we could get it to the voters by next November. You know, I'd like some staff to kind of tell us, like, what's realistic about, well, how could, you know, how long would it take us to get to realistic numbers to then we could put together a pamphlet for the voters to make an informed decision on? And I know that the sellers have been talking about this for over a year. So, you know, we've seen in the past even things that council has approved, and then it's gone to the voters, and it's gone a different way. And I don't want to put the sellers in, you know, a tough situation. So, you know, I would want some comfort level from the sellers to say, you know, "We can hold out two years or three years to even know the outcome." Being in real estate and in commercial lending, I know that there are some parameters that a seller can put on a building to ensure that some of their vision is preserved. So I just want to say that out loud. So anyway, those are my initial thoughts, being a numbers person, you know, sitting there crunching the numbers, thinking. And going back to the presentation of, we have some other big things that are coming up, fire stations, libraries, stuff. The Orpheum is a historic, you know, just, it's part of Flagstaff, part of our character, part of who we are. I want to find a way to make this happen at the same time, making sure that we're doing the right thing for our community and our voters and our taxpayers, and making sure that we are not spending taxpayer monies on this that was ear-tagged for our basic operations, our infrastructure and stuff like that. This would have to be something that the voters passed, that they're willing to pay an extra tax or something for. So those are my thoughts initially.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will have more comments after the public, of course. But just to stay on the topic of financing this, I too see some concerns in getting that done, but not in a negative way. It looks like on the horizon, we have upwards of $250 million plus that we need to garner for all the improvements that were mentioned by Councilmember Matthews. And I agree, there are some priorities that are going to supersede the Orpheum. That's just the facts when it comes to public safety and other things. But that doesn't mean that we can't get them all done, especially when you look at the dollar amount, as high as the estimates by Councilmember Matthews was, which is probably pretty accurate. When you're looking at $250 million, it's still a small percentage. So I would agree that we should definitely be moving forward with this, seeing that we have a lot of money to get in front of us. And this would just be a small portion of that money that we would have to work for as a community to garner. I am okay with Scenario One, as long as it's a public entity that was doing the acquisition. But I'm more on the side of Councilmember Matthews when it comes to Scenario Number Two. It just seems like it makes more sense. And from what I understand, Vice Mayor has been doing a ton of work, kind of moving in that direction. But I don't want to put any words into her mouth. And I support the work that Vice Mayor has done up to this point. Of course, I will have some comment after public participation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to take public comment now. First up, we have Ryan Heinches.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, great to see everybody. Thanks so much. My name is Ryan Heinches, and I'm a longtime local Flagstaffian. You may know me from my day job, but I'm not here to represent that. Rather, I come before you as a local resident and a believer that music and culture are the lifeblood of our community. I'm here to share a few thoughts about the Orpheum Theater and its foundational role in Flagstaff. For many, the venue stands as the spiritual cornerstone of downtown and a central temple in a city that prides itself on being a place to gather, to celebrate, and to come together as disparate yet connected people. The live music experience is critical as a community unifier to achieve some sense of harmony and remind us of our shared humanity. As a live music lover myself, the Orpheum stage has served as ground zero for many of the finest live musical moments in Flagstaff's recent past. I've seen some of you there. Wilco, Gillian Welch, Steve Earl, Parliament Funkadelic, J.J. Kael, Leon Russell, Lucinda Williams. This list could go on late into the night, as I'm sure you all know. The stage has hosted folk, rock, bluegrass, hip-hop, country, heavy metal, and many more genres, serving virtually all tastes and walks of life. It's put Flagstaff on the map as a prime tour stop in the West. And as a result, the caliber of artists who've graced the stage has grown exponentially. But the Orpheum isn't just for the established artists. It also serves as a vital incubator for our own scene here in Flagstaff. For many local musicians, it's their first experience on a big stage. It's a chance to step up and perform after years of practicing in a bedroom or jamming in a basement. The Orpheum is a place to be tested and a place to rise to the expectations of your audience and yourself. And for those of us who've had the honor of playing there many times and never loses, it's a lure, and a sense of excitement to have the privilege of standing on the stage has never diminished. The Orpheum's owners, Charles and Chris, along with staff like Sue and Scotty and all the wonderful people, these aren't just folks running a venue. They're family, and they're not people punching a clock or trying to make a fast buck in Flagstaff. These are longtime local passionate stewards of the arts who've worked for years to mold a healthy art scene. I believe that we, as the Flagstaff community, should do everything in our power to ensure that this theater, which is a sacred gem of northern Arizona, continues to thrive in perpetuity. In a time when people feel divided and even alienated from one another, I think it's crucially important to support and defend places like the Orpheum Theater that make us feel as one, even if just for one night at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy McGrane.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to talk. First of all, I want to commend the staff. You did a fantastic job of understanding a very difficult and complex situation, both how important this facility is to the city, the challenges to do something. And I think, you know, what I want to encourage council to look at today is you have an opportunity to say no, and it ends. Or you have this opportunity to say, "We have to figure this out and to continue the process." If you leave it to the whims of commercial enterprise, I'm concerned. The city was very lucky that if Chris Scully bought this 20 years ago and had the best interests of the city and was able to manage this facility for all these years while preserving it. But if you leave it to the whims of the commercial enterprise winds, those winds are blowing in a very unstable way right now, and it could be over before you know it. So I'm just going to encourage you, I don't have anything to say that hasn't been said, honestly, but I want to encourage you to keep rolling up the sleeves and find a way. The city's engagement is the difference maker. It is not the totality of the solution. But your involvement and your commitment to making it happen is going to be the ingredient that will lead to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Smith.
I kind of feel like I'm going to sound like a broken record, but that's not a musical term. That's actually something that everybody employs when they say it. I actually just wanted to put a human face on the name that's up there. I work with Chris very closely in running the building, and I myself am the owner of the business that leases it from the Orpheum Holdings. And I just want to say that involvement in the Orpheum on both sides of it has been a huge honor in the last 20-plus years. In one capacity or the other, it's been immense source of pride and satisfaction for me. And, you know, those words kind of sound like legacy, and legacy is actually not the word I want to use. I want to use stewardship. And the opportunity to get involved in the Orpheum was really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. But stewardship kind of comes in three parts. There's like the beginning, the rising up and accepting of a task and learning the processes that goes involved in a building or a business. And this really was a building that came up from the ashes, so to speak. Through Chris and the initial team, and then subsequently different members, it became what it is today. And I was lucky enough to be involved in this from almost the very beginning. My own involvement was almost serendipity, but my involvement also was born of enthusiasm and, at that point, vitality. We are all, that vitality, enthusiasm persists to this day. But, you know, that was 20-plus years ago, and we are different people. The theater's a different place than it was. That continues to this day. So Part Two of stewardship is kind of taking on primary responsibility. That's broadening our impact, what we do in the community, who we reach out to, the mundane task of employing people locally, maintaining a theater, ensuring diverse programming and quality. In that time, we put on many, many artists. Ryan's made, mentioned a few, but I just want to mention a few more. This is name dropping, but it's not just J.J. Kael and Wilco, but also the Shins, Montez Mouse, Michael Franti, Leon Russell, Bela Fleck, Social Distortion. I was looking through today, there was hundreds of pages of names that we have put on. The most important thing, though, and I only have 40 seconds left to talk about this, is really talking about the third part of stewardship, which is ensuring the future. And to kind of take it the next step. We've done a lot in 25 years. It's gone from scratch to what it is today. But for me, maybe the most important of stewardship is kind of finding the good hands to place the responsibility in the future. That's kind of the third part of stewardship. It's not just what you did or what you're doing now, but the next step. Thank you, council. Thank you, councilmembers, staff, managers.
Thank you. Chris Scully.
Good afternoon. There's no way I can do this in three minutes, but I'll give it a try. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate you guys even considering these ideas for the Orpheum Theater. It's been, as Charles said, an honor of our lives to participate in this. I don't know how long I'm going to do on staying on script here. But I would say that, you know, the Orpheum isn't me. Orpheum is not Charles. The Orpheum is us, and it has been us for a long time. It's been us since before we got there. You know, we've, I could go through, you know, some specifics. If you guys have questions about the Orpheum, I'm sure you do. I'm happy to answer them about who the actual ownership is and how it's all split up. But I'm just going to cut to the very end of here and let you guys, you know, I've talked enough over the last 25 years. Over the last 100 years, the Orpheum has employed thousands. It's hosted tens of thousands of events. We've entertained many millions at the Orpheum and generated who knows how much revenue throughout this community. You know, it is not the same town or world that it was when I came to this town in 1983, when I bought my house in 1990, when we started the Orpheum in 2002. I was a simple construction worker, just regular people trying to do something like this. You know, you think it's hard for a young person to buy a house nowadays? Imagine taking on a project like this. I'm calling it out to all the young people in this community. You know, this is the time to step up. And I really think that the council and the city could help with this. Let's take the Orpheum into the future. I can't go off without thanking all the people that helped on this, Miranda especially, who worked at the Orpheum back in the day. She was part of the New Year's Eve celebration 25 years ago that we started here, farmer's market, movies on the square, other great things that we started that we've continued into the future. Let's take the Orpheum into the future. So thank you all very much for your consideration. Thank you very much for all your help.
Thank you, Chris. And Councilmember Matthews has a question.
Chris, getting back to my favorite topics, speed of government. If this takes a couple of years, are you in a position, willing to wait to see what the outcome, knowing that it could not go the way you'd want? I mean, after we do all the due diligence and even getting council support, if the voters don't vote it up, do you have that kind of time?
A couple of years. I mean, we were hoping that this is something that could be resolved in the next election cycle. You know, we've been talking about this. I've been talking about this for 10 years. I've been speaking with Miranda and some members here for over a year about this. And we have some very specific timelines that we have to meet as far as some of our financial obligations, as far as, you know, we do need to pull a new mortgage on this building before too long. But we're willing to bridge some of that. You know, we're not hard and fast on, oh, we've got this, you know, this date early next spring that we've got to take care of. Much beyond that is probably past, you know, what we can really tolerate as far as, you know, I'm going to be 62 years old. We're looking to retire. So, you know, if this is going to be years and years, I don't think that we can wait that long, but, you know, maybe a couple of years. And we would like to try to have this resolved, you know, hopefully by this next cycle. this resolved, you know, hopefully by this next cycle. Does that answer your?
Yes, thank you. That's one of the things that I think we'll all want to look forward to is hearing the probability factor of we could get this on the ballot by next year for sure. So thank you.
And I will address that, you know, do I, you know, the idea that someone else is going to come in here and take this off of our hands and operate a new venue, that could happen, but, you know, we've been there a very long time, and Live Nation or anyone else has come to us to say that they want to take on this project. So, you know, I have a feeling that if we go public, you know, we're going to be talking to a lot of developers and a lot of corporations that want to repurpose or replace. So we're hoping that that's not the case. Any other questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Dapper Dre.
Good to see everybody. Hello. I guess, you know, it's the chamber and it's the echo chamber for me as well. I think the importance of, of course, not only gathering spaces, but all arts and cultural spaces in this day and age are of utmost importance, especially ones as longstanding in the community fabric as the Orpheum and what you folks perceive for the ICC as well. I agree for ICC, I agree with all those statements. The arts district idea is a pretty cool one to consider. Can that get funded? Can that go to the voters? And everybody agree to that? I think that is what a vote is, right? You put it out to the public, see what they think. If you get the reaction you want, then you move forward with those things that we all hold and have voted to say, that we hold of importance and want to move forward with. I would agree with all the things that's said about the Orpheum. And I think of even more importance in what we see with the privatization of spaces and areas and corporatization of those same things, you know, anything we can do to hold on to it as a city so that it has more longevity than just an investment or a ticket sales opportunity or anything like that. Same with the Cultural Center. You know, we want to hold these things in perpetuity, and however we can do that, we need to start now, you know, because everything just gets more expensive as inflation continues. Everything gets pushed to either the next council or the next hiring system, as it may be. So the quicker we act, the quicker we decide that we want to hold these things, we want to make sure that we keep them in the cultural fabric of Flagstaff, I think is important, and especially in the age of everybody wanting to stay at home on their screens. We should have these places that we get people together, that we get people to gather. I've, you know, done numerous, probably can't count how many fundraisers I've been a part of and memorials and, you know, concerts, grand events, small events, not only at the Orpheum, but just in Flagstaff in general. And we only have so many buildings that we can hold on to like this to let it go or to not give our best efforts, I think would be a stain not only on current council, but, you know, the citizens of Flagstaff at that given time when there was an opportunity to kind of hold it in our hands, we shouldn't let that go. So it sounds like everybody's, again, on the positivity of it, how that looks, how that happens, how you slice it. Well, I just hope for the best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anslim Yazi.
Good evening. How are you guys doing? Mayor and City Council. My name is Anslim Yazi. I'm from Flagstaff, grew up here, went to Flag High. My parents went to Flagstaff High School. And I was actually talking to my mom about this earlier when I was telling her I'm going to come and speak to you, and she mentioned to me that when my parents were dating, they went to the Orpheum and saw the Graduate back in the '60s. So I wouldn't be here unless that place were here. So, on a more serious note, the Orpheum has been such a great landmark in our town, providing a venue for arts and music and a gathering place like what everyone has been saying before. I think that's the biggest thing that we've been hearing a lot about community. And I think as a community that we can do something to preserve this place of music, of pleasure, of fun, and I think that's important, and I think that's most key to that. When I was speaking to Charles actually about this, and he mentioned about trying to preserve this landmark, you know, it really comes back to how you can do this and make this happen. Encouraging people, it's going to be pretty easy to gather people from our community to get behind this notion of actually it become a community building and an asset to our community. One of the things I wanted to sort of say that wasn't mentioned before is that, you know, the Orpheum has a philanthropic sort of part of our community. It serves as a place where people together and make things known, bring important sort of concepts, ideas, and things that we are important to our community. So I wanted to leave you with that, that not only is it about music and gathering, but it's about, you know, saving something that's important to our community and that's the, helping others and helping ourselves to be better. And it'd be great for our kids to kind of give that too, so, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Al White.
Howdy. So I'm here to basically, I guess, support Miranda's suggestion that we have further discussion on the item and see if there's a way that you can preserve this valued historic community asset. And as assets go, when the city owns assets, there are two uses of that, of those assets. And the first one, of course, is to provide a revenue stream that helps us finance the provision of the services that we provide as a city. Or the other use of an asset is to actually provide those services. And I think the Orpheum does both. Ultimately, financially, it would become a revenue stream, but in the meantime, it helps to preserve a very valuable downtown character, which I think by looking around has the potential to disappear at any time. And I think that would be a horrible shame. So please, continue the conversations. I was on the council in 2008 when we did the Giplip, and it was important then, and it's important now. Thanks.
Al.
Al, just a sec.
Question for you.
Oh.
Hi. Thanks for coming down here and commenting. I know you've been on the board in the past, or maybe you still are, over at the Theatricos.
Yeah.
That is an arrangement between the city, and I'm wondering if you could speak to that experience, maybe make some comparisons, share with us any warning signs or pitfalls we should avoid, lessons learned, I guess, or just how comparable do you think those two things are?
I'm not, I mean, I really can't speak to represent the board. I did indeed present this idea to the Board of Directors, and the response that I got back was, was, let's look at anything that doesn't cost us more money. Now, our involvement as part of an arts district would be wonderful, I think, and I think we could be another anchor to downtown's experience, and have always offered us as that. I think the real benefit to the city is, I mean, it's kind of a different set of circumstances. You acquired the building, another 100-year-old building. You acquired that as part of the city's activities early on as the library. It functioned as a library. So the ownership was already there. In this case, you'd have to get that, and that could be an additional expense. By the same token, I think that the rents you could collect would be far more significant coming from the Orpheum as well. But I think the key there is the long-term association, the long-term lease, whatever you do. The long-term lease that got entered into with Theatricos allows us to go out and fundraise on it, to the extent that we can say, the city has that faith, we're going to be there for a while, please contribute. And I think that's significant in terms of the relationship that you would want to have with the Orpheum. You put it in an arts district and you kind of guarantee that a little bit better. Does that help you, Austin?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Hey, absolutely. I live to serve.
Thank you, Al.
See ya. Are you with me?
Yes, I'm with you.
Yeah, good, let's push, because I got this little motor going.
Stephen Poor.
Mayor, Council, again, I'm back. I think I go to the theater three times a year at least. It's a great asset to the community. I urge you to look at creative ways moving forward. You noted that some of the people took a look at Tucson and Scottsdale and Phoenix, and they've got a big density problem, significantly higher than ours, okay? And that helps them with their taxes. We don't have that tax base. Be careful on how you spend your money in the bank, sir. There are different ways. There are community assets already in this town that started to raise money to grow a beer label, for example. There are different avenues to go down than just some of the few that have been mentioned here. So I keep your mind open to those different avenues. And, you know, if you, we want to have this asset, I just recognize that if it's been around about 100 years, it's been in private hands for 100 years. I'm not sure it needs to change, but if it needs to change, it needs to change. So be open to continuing stewardship by other angels that belong in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. George Averbeck.
Hey, guys. A lot of new faces up there. I haven't been here for three, four years. Couple of things I just wanted to mention, I've been to some really good shows there, really excellent shows. I've been to fundraisers there. I've been to galas there. But the only people I haven't seen there is the symphony. But, you know, I buy tickets for the symphony, and I bet with some creative thought, you guys could put together a ticket package for the Orpheum. That can lend to funding greatly. And, you know, I do the Pluto Festival every year. I make ornaments for different visiting artists. It's interesting that Pluto was discovered by Clyde Tombow. Well, Clyde Tombow went to a movie the night he discovered Pluto. It was The Virginian, and it starred Gary Cooper. And I'll leave you guys with that.
Thank you. Brian Locke.
Thank you. As a long-term resident of Flagstaff, Flagstaff stuck kid, left, came back, said I'd never come back. If you had told me in the '90s that Heritage Square wasn't a dirt parking lot, the Orpheum would still be standing, we would be nationally recognized for dropping a pine cone off a hotel, I probably would have laughed in your face. As 2016 Coquigny County Teacher of the Year, being in education for 22 years now, I like the idea of an art district. I like the idea of not losing something that is really an educational piece of our fabric. And as if you heard a lot of these folks here, dating myself, obviously, they're, I'm with the money aspect of it. Money scares me. I pay my taxes, and adding on to that doesn't make me feel great, but at the same token, if it's something worthwhile, if it's something that's been in our community that we can use, that future generations can use, I think it's worth moving forward and figuring that out. So I guess my comment is, the art district sounds awesome, more so than just Orpheum, just looking at a 100-year-old building. I'm also a history guy, so there is that bias towards me, but I think being able to use that on an educational piece is good as well. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to come back to Councilmember House and then to Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all so much for the presentation, and thank you to the community members who have spoken on this. I think a couple of different things stood out to me in this conversation, particularly just the historical lens that we're taking on all of this and the importance of recognizing, as one of the public commenters said, that this isn't just about any one person or an owner or any one group. It's an all-of-us conversation. I think what really excites me about this conversation is ongoing conversations that I've been having, and I know Vice Mayor has clearly been having, about the importance of the arts to our community and how important those are, not only to our culture and to our identity as a community, but also to our local economy and what a gift the arts are in terms of being able to cycle back and meet so many needs in our community. So I'm really excited about that potential. One of the questions that I had is just if either Dave or Deputy City Manager Keen can talk about the difference between options one and two, so the difference just between the private-public management or the district model.
So I think I'll start the response, and then if Deputy Manager Keen wants to hop up and add something, please feel free. Scenario one really is a somewhat traditional model in some ways, and it's in some ways the simpler one, where the city of Flagstaff would likely acquire the Orpheum, some portion of the, either the structure or a portion of the structure and the assets, but it would acquire the venue and then likely through a competitive process, although I guess since all options could be on the table as we're exploring, there could even be a public administration, but likely through a competitive process would identify a vendor who would manage it either for arts and science spaces or as a venue for entertainment and an anchor for the downtown. And so in that situation, it is similar to what we've talked about earlier, where Theatricos, it is a city building with a private entity that's managing it. You see that with CCA, you see that with Pepsi Amphitheater, and as mentioned, Scottsdale Center for the Arts and various other venues. It's actually fairly common throughout the United States to have venues that are owned by municipalities and then managed either privately by a nonprofit or a for-profit for the benefit of either the commercial district they're in, like the Rialto, or for the community as a whole, as an arts and science venue, for instance. And so this is in some ways a simpler version, in part because it stays very focused on that traditional piece. I think what makes scenario two a little more complicated, but also in some ways more appealing, as we've heard to certain folks, is that it mixes together this idea of the fact that we do have a vibrant fact that we do have a vibrant artistic scene here in Flagstaff. I think we all know that we've got a great number of theater groups, we've got a great number of music, music talent here, and so, and we also have the idea around the Indigenous Cultural Community Cultural Center. And so this actually looks to acquire the venue as part of something larger, where potentially there would be this arts district. And one thing that, the word district sometimes can be heard within government as something that's a taxing entity. That is not necessarily what's mentioned here. An arts district may be just something where there's a governing entity that incorporates different arts and cultural venues throughout the downtown or in the surrounding areas, and can work together to really enhance the space and create the kind of vibrant arts and culture scene that we know could happen with more and better venues. So it becomes a scenario where we would potentially acquire it and then work to help develop this arts district, whatever form that is, with the idea that over time it would either, the ownership could transfer to the arts district itself, or it could stay within the city, but be governed to some extent by the arts district. And that is, I think, where you start seeing more involvement by some of the other nonprofit and for-profit entities. One thing that we've talked about, and I believe it's in the staff summary itself, is trying to work to make sure that we're not creating competition for existing businesses, but enhancing the cultural sector as a whole. And so in some ways, finding ways to do that is a part of this as well. Does that help answer that question?
It does, thank you. And I think, was City Manager wanting to comment on that same question? Or something?
Just perhaps an elaboration. I was going to mention Theatricos, thank you very much for doing that. It's a very good model of option one. But the idea of an arts district, and we have discussed this frequently at many of the meetings, is more of an encompassing entity, not knowing exactly what it would look like, but it could be more than just arts. It could be arts, it could be culture, it could be education, it could be a number of things. And it's, along with that, too, is, I think, a very likely premise that of all the facilities we're talking about here, there would be varying levels of revenue generation dependent upon what the function is. So the Orpheum, of course, puts on great shows, and they generate revenues to show for it, and they serve the community well in doing so. Theatricos, with the theater, same comment. When we restructured the lease with Theatricos a few years ago, it was done very purposefully to accomplish what Mr. White just mentioned, enabling them to receive endowments and continue to function, and doing so even during the pandemic, in that times when people were not spending a lot of time going to theaters. So these are important considerations. The ICCC, you know, a very, for that to be enveloped within a larger umbrella district entity probably makes sense when you think about it. It will most certainly necessitate some capital outlay to get the building up to where it needs to be. And then over time, you know, the security of a district that is a little bit more encompassing of the facilities we're talking about, it could work. I think, not at all suggesting it is the answer, but I think if there's outcome from this discussion tonight to move the conversation forward, that is one of the things that should be strongly considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I think, in my mind, I lean towards Scenario two, and just wanted some further understanding of that. And I think, to kind of go back to one of the comments from Councilmember Matthews, one of the important things in my mind with all of this is ensuring that we are meeting a number of our community needs at once in moving forward with something like this. And certainly, the elevation and the moving forward of the ICCC is such a critical thing for our community. It's something that has been asked for, as Councilmember Matthews noted, and I believe Rose noted as well, for over 40 years. And that is just as much part of the history and the thread of the cultural story of Flagstaff as the Orpheum and other centers of the arts. I think what really stands out to me in all of this is just the opportunity that an art district and the acquiring of the Orpheum and moving this conversation offers to unify that vision of our arts culture and our arts economy. Going to another public comment, just talking about the opportunity of this to serve a greater purpose than just, or not just, as though that's small, but not only serving our community, but also providing that opportunity for economic development and advancement. I think that is such an important consideration in this conversation. So that's it for me. I'm very excited and interested in seeing this conversation continue and moving forward. And last thing for me is just to answer the question that Deputy City Manager Keen put forward. I believe that it was January 2022, and if I am right, then I will just donate that $10 right back to you.
And I accidentally skipped over Vice Mayor, so Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I can't wait to see if you're right. I bet, I bet she is. She usually is. Someone commented earlier that, you know, nothing is ever simple, and I think that resonated with me, because at first I thought, option one, simple, we can probably get that done. But I don't think in this case that's really the right thing. I think the right thing is to do the arts district, to get the Orpheum under this umbrella, to get the ICCC under this umbrella, a project we have been promising. And I think it takes vision, it takes courage, and I believe that those in the room and this community and those up here on the dais have that. So I am very much in support of going with option two. And I do, you know, as a comment to Chris Scully, thank you for bringing this to me and also having the vision that we could get this done. I hope that you're a little lenient on your timeline. I will admit, I'm a little worried about that, and I've expressed that to you, so I just want to throw that out there, but we are trying. This staff and this leadership team, we are all trying. And I just, I thank everyone in the room tonight, all of those that emailed us, and all of those that are sitting up here considering these options. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick and Michelle, can you come up here? I have a question that probably will take both of you. I knew you were up in the front row, just waiting.
We were hiding you.
So, Rick, when would we, what's the timeline to put something on the ballot for next year? What's the date?
That's, that's our
Is that Stacy?
Year, but generally, July, the first meeting in July is the last time we want to have council action to get it on the ballot.
So we have a year?
Yeah.
Michelle?
We really want to have it done probably May. Yeah, for November ballot, yep.
So, Michelle?
Yes?
This is a pre-interview question.
For the economic development? No.
Given the things that we've talked about, two big buildings, acquiring, one, you know, getting a number together, figuring out what, whether it's an art district or something, is that something in the speed of our government that could happen and where we could have an actual ballot question by May, June?
I appreciate that you think I know the answer to that question.
Maybe I should ask Bryce.
And, you know, that goes way beyond planning. I mean, really, I think there's a lot of due diligence that needs to be done to understand, you know, what I've seen in the presentations and the conversations is to understand, you know, kind of what Dave said, going in eyes wide open. I will say this, I think that there's a dedicated team to, if it's possible, yes, to making it happen. So I'll leave with that.
That's good enough. Thank you. So with that, I definitely want to move forward. You know, I think that the Orpheum is, like someone referenced, a gem in our community, has so much history. Our community is tied, you know, they're the grandmother and the mother, and people were born because of what they did and saw at the Orpheum. My gosh, how can we, how can we not acknowledge that? But having said that, ICCC, you know, it's one thing to have these obligations, but we made a promise, a commitment decades ago, that our indigenous community has felt that we have forgotten, it were empty words, that we are not serious about it, and I don't blame them because they waited 40 years. And now all of a sudden, we've got this other, you know, opportunity coming up, and we're hurrying. Not that I want to discount it, but it will be my sticking point, that whatever the solution is, and maybe, I don't know, I'm not for sure an expert on art districts and how this goes, so maybe there's a different way, maybe there's a different grants that are available and we could go after to obtain these things that we want. So I want us to think out of the box, and I do want to move forward on this. I think that, as Michelle said, there's enough dedication and interest within our team, within our staff, that we will work, move forward to explore what opportunities we have and what that looks like, may not be what we think it needs to look like today, but we definitely should pursue it. I want to make sure that we have transparency, community involvement, definitely need to go to the voters, because this is, this is something that's important and special, but it's not flood mitigation, and it's not fire protection, and it's not those things, those core services, that is our first and foremost obligation to provide to the city. So I do want to make sure that our whole community has that buy-in and have the opportunity to vote on it. So I'm in favor of moving forward. I'm leaning towards Scenario two right now, but if whoever is in that core team comes and says, you know, we came, we kind of came up with a different way to approach this and achieve this, I'm open to that, too, because we don't know what we don't know. But definitely, let's put the fire under it, because the clock's ticking, and let's see what we come up with. But those, that's, the ICCC is definitely a deal killer for me if we can't incorporate that somehow. And I think it's time for us to have an art district. You know, we have a beautiful, you know, arts and entertainment, you know, community and stuff, and I think that that's something that the community is ready for and would like to see, and us to really organize behind that. So that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Aslan, then Councilmember Garcia, then Councilmember Spence.
Thank you. Definitely thought I'd weigh in here on this. I'll try to be brief. Honestly, I, you know, I sensed some tension in the room and some uncertainty, like we don't know how this is going to go. Well, let me be the fourth vote to put this over the top, or the fourth voice of support in favor of Scenario two. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot more support that comes along with this, too. I don't, I don't see how this is really a heavy lift in terms of council buy-in, because I think, again, that this is, this is a reflection of the community. This will go to the voters, I'm glad for that. I think that's appropriate. It allows the electorate to sort of put their money where their mouth is in terms of getting behind supporting this and the ICCC. And I think it'll pass. I think it'll pass with broad support, so that's just my early prediction here. The only caution I would give to that is that there is such a thing as voter fatigue, and we do have other things that we need to fund that are critical. This isn't critical. It's something we want to do, and it's something we think we can do, and I think we should do it, but it's not critical like some of the other things we need to put on the ballot next year as well. And there might be a trade-off. Voters will, will support this because they want to, because it feels good to them, because they want to feel like they're contributing, and they might say no to other things. So that's just, that's just a word of caution out there. We need to make sure that this isn't in opposition or in the face of our other needs. But generally, I'm sure the public would support it, I'm fully behind it. If there, if there might have been something else I wanted to say, I think it might have slipped away. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of my top three goals as a councilperson was to embolden and expand the arts, culture, and historical preservation of our community. And this is something that falls in line with Scenario two. And we've heard that there are other priorities that are more important right now, but what I'm going to go off on speaking to for the next couple of minutes is a little ethereal, and it's something that is probably less quantifiable, but goes in line with my rendition of being an artist, not somebody who paints, you know, and then tries to sell a painting, but uses moments of their life to represent art as art of being a human, and how critical that could be to certain people's lives. When I think of the Orpheum, I think of stories, and I'll get back to that, but stories that changed people's lives forever. And when I went to the community the last couple of weeks and spoke to people, that's all I heard, like, super impactful, I'll get there. I want to bring light to what Rose Tohe spoke of, this building being, and that was the building with a spirit. So when we think about this place that has a spirit, I start to build in how critical it actually is. You might think that it's a little bit crazy that I say this, but to some of us in the community who have reaped the benefits that I have from just this establishment, and I don't even mean being inside of it, I'll get more to the story on that here in a minute, but just what the Orpheum has done for me personally and the people that I have spoke to, it's more of a church. It gives us the same feeling that I think that people that wake up on Sunday and get ready and go to church have that same feeling when they go to the, to the Orpheum or things that surround the Orpheum. A church with a bar. And I, I don't want people to, I don't want people to want, miss it. I don't want to miss, people to misinterpret that, because I guess there is two sides to that. I'm talking on an ethereal level here. Yeah, when I think of the Orpheum, I don't think of a bar or a music, just a music and culture facility and a place for revenue and things like that. I think of something that holds greater spiritual value. We heard Stephen Poor mention today, the building that's run by the angels, and we'll find some more angels to run this again, which spoke directly to my heart. I'm, I'm shaking right now, and you'll, you'll see why here in a minute. So many lives have changed, so many stories, thousands of local residents and beyond have been affected by this place for more than just a bar and a place to go get a little woozy and maybe get your first kiss or whatever. The historical relevance is also really important. The story I like to hear the most is when my father talks about it. I don't like to hear this one the most, but it shows that how, how far we've come. His first experience in the Orpheum was when he went in there and it said browns and blacks are, were to go upstairs and sit upstairs. Well, little did they know, those were the best seats in the house, on the balcony. So, you know, eventually that changed. My first movie that I went to go see there, and I don't mind dating myself, because I think it makes me seem younger than I actually, or, yeah, so younger than I might look, is ET. I saw ET for the first time, and it was a prolific experience, of course. Then again, we, I reference back to Charles Smith when he spoke of serendipity. I want to go a little bit further and expand on that word, and maybe use words like esoteric, metaphysical, and, for lack of a better term, destiny, when it comes to the focal point of something that garners more light in the downtown area and brings, and has brought so many people here to experience the sacred peaks, to get connected to our community, and to want to stay in our community as time goes on. Chris Scully mentioned that it's time for anybody out there who's listening right now to step up. And I want to encourage you with an inspirational story that I'm going to tell now about how I ended up in the city council for the first time. We're going to go back to 2008, where the giblet was coming online. I had just lost my business, I was, I had played music for a year, that didn't work out, and I didn't know what was left. But one night, while I was listening to the radio, there was a call to the public, probably from the, from the City of Flagstaff themselves, just trying to get public participation, that said the Orpheum that said, "The orpheum needs help. We need you, the community, to come and support this giblet to help the, the orpheum back then make some improvements and stick, kind of stay in business, for lack of a better term." And without any experience doing anything besides, you know, being a kid growing up at Flagstaff and the things that go along with that, being a musician and having a failed business, I was called, I was called to come to the city, to the city hall, not even knowing that there was a council here in this chambers. I thought that I could write something and hand it to the mayor. Well, I brought it on a day, I didn't choose the day, I just brought it on a day. It happened to be around five o'clock, because they had council meetings at different times back then, without knowing there was a council meeting here. And I asked a man at the door, who turned out to be Chief Brent Cooper, I didn't know him then, where I can give this letter to the mayor. And he looked at it and he said, "Wow, that's on the agenda tonight. So what you're going to do is you're going to go up there," he told me the process of public participation. I had no clue. There was a room full of people just like this, and I think one person I remember in here was Scott Overton, he was sitting in this seat at that time, and he, he might remember me from those days, too, with my brown suit and tie, trying to look like I belonged here, because I really didn't, or I didn't, I mean, I, I didn't have the experience to be here, but I was building it. I, I spoke to the topic, and from there, I remember David McIntyre was in housing back then, and he, "So it's nice to be able to work with you on this project." But from there, it seemed like I was just guided by something way beyond me, and I'm, for lack of a better term, possessed to be the person that helped the, from a community perspective, to get this giblet passed. And it caused me to stay in this room every Tuesday night for the preceding next two years, and, and that giblet did pass. I don't think it was just because I was here, I was very inexperienced at the time, and it's probably a little bit laughable that I was in these rooms. But getting back to Chris's point, I came, I just stepped up. Anybody has the opportunity to do that now, and who knows what your future could look like, because without that tie to the orpheum, with, I wouldn't have ever gotten on the B-Pak, I certainly wouldn't be a councilperson that stands in front of you today. There's something more to this building than, than, than has to do with money-making and music. And if you ask any musicians that have climbed up the ranks to international artists because of the orpheum, and the people's lives it has changed that have worked at the orpheum, that have started out as a ticket taker and maybe now manage the place, and the countless, you know, children that came from the orpheum in many different ways, I use the word metaphysical again, I think that it's a community asset that, that, that goes beyond things that are quantifiable and that have been discussed today. And that's why I, I have, I believe in my heart that this cultural asset will sustain and, and succeed. And my first and last grant I ever wrote was for the orpheum, because I had this great idea. Back then, they teamed up with Creative, what was Creative Flagstaff back then. And so that, so they had to include me into their process, because I was the guy who stood up every meeting and, and said stuff about the orpheum. But if you could look back on that grant, if it's in the files somewhere back in there eighteen years ago, you'll see a forty-five-minute video, which I dug out and found, that I had made for, for, for that giblet, and, and what you'll see is everything that we're talking about today as far as ideas were included into that grant then. So while this has nothing to do with me, this has everything to do with the spirit of what drives passion and passion for your community and passion for helping people out that started from the orpheum, and I hope I didn't suck all the air out of the room, but if I did, it's perfect time, because I'm second to last on the list here. And it's a nice way to close in speaking to something that we can't necessarily quantify all the time, but is very, very important from a historical standpoint. When you, I mean, look at maybe somebody that goes to college and ends up to be a successful professor, you know, everything that goes into that, that's what happened when I answered the call to come to the orpheum. This is what happened. Thank you.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Anthony. That was inspiring. And thank you, Mayor, for the chance to offer my thoughts. I want to, first of all, thank everybody on this dais who has spoken about the importance of including the Indigenous Cultural Center with our considerations to save the orpheum. The ICC is creating something, the orpheum is preserving something and creating at the, at the same time. So my thanks to everybody who's spoken in favor of this linkage on the dais. My thanks to staff and community members that have spoken to this linkage. I, I think it's a testament to our community that this idea of linking the two together has come forward, and I strongly support it. I want to ask for transparency from the current owners of the orpheum. I think we need to hear, not necessarily at this moment, but we need to hear what is the asking price for the building. I think we need to get that appraisal that's been mentioned, and we need to have a scoping for what is needed to move the building from private ownership into possible city ownership. The city needs to know, like Councilmember Matthews has said, we need to know what we're getting into in terms of the structure, the rehabilitation that might be needed to have it become a city-owned cultural venue. So I strongly think that we can, can go to the voters if that's, if that's necessary, and it, and it probably is, but I think we need these figures before we can move forward. I, too, like Scenario Two, where we have a arts district that can encompass the ICC and the orpheum to help make that a, a package. So my thanks to everybody who's spoken to this, and Anthony, you spoke to my heart as well. Thank you.
All right. I, too, am in support of, I'm in support of whatever scenario gets it done, but Scenario Two sounds good to me, the, the idea of, I just think so much more could come out of this with an arts district. And I am also fully in, the ICCC has, has been on our, has been on the books for a long time, and so I feel confident that we're not going to let that go by the wayside, because we know how important that is. And I just think that there's so many synergies that, that can come from this arts district. And Chris, you know, in the time that I was at the city in economic development and we worked on the giblet, it's, I have, I have positive memories of the meetings with Roger Fontanini and, and you trying to work out that deal. So I'm, I'm happy to be here again when it, when it comes around, and I think every single person in this room has a connection with the orpheum in some way, whether it's, you were conceived there, or, or you've just seen a million concerts there, gone to fundraisers, memorials. It really has been a cornerstone of the community for a long, long time. So I'm happy to support moving forward with this conversation and excited to do it, and appreciative of everyone whose fingerprints have been on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think we have our direction. And back to Councilmember Spence's comment, we will be looking at doing an appraisal pretty quickly, we think sixty to ninety days, but we likely won't bring this back until after council break. We have some due diligence we need to do, also a facility assessment, and also kind of look at what the structure could look like and bring that back as well. And I would prefer not to hear any more stories about people being conceived in the orpheum or other activity. But with that, Mayor and Council, thank you. Great discussion, and thanks for all the public who came out, and to Charles and Chris for being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. We are moving down to item number ten, regional plan implementation.
My name is Sarah Decter. I'm your comprehensive and neighborhood planning manager for the city of Flagstaff. I'm here tonight to follow up on a few things from, that we learned from the May second retreat that we had jointly with the county, to go over the draft regional plan and potential changes to the update. And I think Vice Mayor Sweet summed it up very nicely in saying, "Nothing is ever simple", in the last conversation, because one of the things I think we had a less-than-clear conversation on, but staff took a lot of it in, is how are we going to be implementing a new draft plan? And there's sort of a few things to think about here, that the plan in its, in implementation that's the most legally prescriptive is actually one of three things. It is the plan plus code plus projects. And when we were with the county, it's hard to have that conversation, because they are dealing with a completely different code at the state level and a completely different code at a local level. And so we pulled this conversation to the side, so we are going to very specifically talk about how the draft plan, which we hope to start public hearings on while, when you're back from break, could be implemented in the city, given our code, potential that we might want to make updates or clarifications within our code as part of adopting a new plan, and all the complexity therein. So we're going to dive into a lot more detail than we were able to do when we were meeting with our partners, and hopefully what I, we are going to walk away with today is some final, fine-grained edits that I need to do to the draft plan, so I can get it back out to the public. So where are we? We are on the eve of Phase Four in the regional plan. It feels like it took us a long time to get through Phases Two and Three, I know, but we did a lot of great work in both of those phases. So a plan is created, we've made revisions based on the May second retreat, and there's just this one more level we want to make sure is right. And the reason is that there are these slightly, slight adjustments to the plan that we want to make sure meet your expectations. One, talking through this more complicated code plus plan plus project scenarios with you and going through a few examples. Two, to review some, two items from the retreat. One, there was discussion of working with Little America, understanding resorts and hospitality needs on their property better, and we've been engaging in conversations with them about that over the last few months, and have done some research on what other jurisdictions are doing about those kinds of uses. I want to share that with you tonight. And then the second thing is, is there was what I called, I think at the time, the sweet Mandino compromise pertaining to the trails map, and we want to show you an updated version of the trails map, and hear if there are any further edits on the city-scale trails map that need to be made, so that what we're taking into public hearing is final, or as close to final as we can get. So there, I'm, I'm going to take you back, that a couple times I've shown you that the project team had these critical success factors, and I want to make you keep in mind the three that are most bolded here today, which are, this plan should be feasible and implementable. I've kind of tried to describe that as, it works on day one. One of the problems we had with our 2014 plan was, it didn't quite work on day one. It worked on day three hundred, but it took us almost a year of making post-ratification tweaks to the document, to really make it function at the places where it's used the most often, which are the front counter and pre-application meetings. It just didn't work on that level when we adopted it. So to me, this is the kind of fine-tuning we're hoping to get your feedback on today. It also has to reflect community values. We've had thousands and thousands of comments that have given input into the draft regional plan, and we've had lots of discussion about those community values. And so what we do to make it feasible and implementable also has to meet community values. And then lastly, as you were last week or two weeks ago at the retreat to discuss the land availability suitability study and the code analysis project, we have to really have some fine-tuning and understanding of cost constraints and affordability concerns for the community. So I just want to talk through this really quick before we jump into some of those details. We put this graphic together, it's lived through several iterations through the last plan and this one, and tonight, I want to stay really focused on this code plus plan plus project side. So we will not be talking about how we might use the plan and the budget, or how it might be influencing capital projects, or what it means for the streets master plan, or the housing plan, or the carbon neutrality plan. It does all of those things. That's actually the easier part to make feasible and implementable. The more difficult part to make feasible and implementable is how does it work with our engineering standards and zoning ordinances and annexation requests and zoning map and text amendments? That's the more detailed side. So really, we're focusing on this side today, and Michelle's here to help answer any questions that might be more towards the development review side or the building safety side and how those interact with this conversation. But just bear that in mind, we really, the plan does so many things, but this is what we're really wanting to focus on. So I want to go back to those things the plan can do in terms of our priorities, or our, sorry, our critical success factors. First, how is the process of implementing the plan related to costs and affordability? Process creates costs in development review, because the way costs are considered, and this makes me so nerdy, I'm really excited to share real estate economics with you in this moment, I can't express that enough, is that when you are building a plan for developing property or redeveloping a property, you're not just looking at money, you're looking at the time value of money, because these things take several years, so you have to look at it in real dollars, and then you have to make assumptions about costs over a longer period of time, and also about returns over a longer period of time. So if we take three years to process a development case, there is more uncertainty, there are greater costs, there's inflation in several different kinds of levels, there are financing concerns, they may have had to borrow money and be already having to pay back or have a balloon payment coming up. So these are things to consider. There is real time value of money when we are talking about how complex our processes and how predictable they are. A more complex process or conflicting properties can also do things that reduce the area of a site that can be developed. If, if you have a lot of things that you're not clear on how you're going to prioritize them, it can kind of squeeze in development into smaller areas within a site. That may be good or bad, and those are the kinds of trade-offs you have to consider. There is also uncertainty in the process. From the day someone brings in an application to the city, they are investing money, and they're, the more uncertain their process is, the more difficult it can be to get financing, to get people to join them in taking on risk associated with development. And also slowing down applications in a way that we do want, let's say that, the applications we do want. If we are slowing those down, we are actually slowing our progress towards planned priorities and reaching those planned priorities. So just keep those things in mind as we talk about costs and affordability. On the community value side, we have competing community values always, that's inherent in land use planning. The plan is our guide to addressing competing community The plan is our guide to addressing competing community values. And the plan we've drafted does that through priorities, goals, and policies. To ensure the plan's implemented, we need a clear process on what are we going to do with those competing values and with those goals and policies when those arrows aren't pointing us in the same direction? And that's one of the things we hope to clear up. So now I'm going to like shake off the like big picture ideas and we're going to dive into the details. What you see on the screen is what the Arizona revised statute says we need to do under zoning regulations for all zoning, rezoning ordinances and regulations. And that just doesn't mean staff ones. That means property owner proposed amendments to the land use map in the zoning code and the zoning map. So it says that we shall be consistent with and conform to adopted general plans. And it says this in two specific ways. It says, "Conform with the land use element." There are about 15 or 20 elements to the general plan, which we organize then into chapters. It does not say conforms to other elements. But conformance is really defined as with the land use element. It says, "And in cases of uncertainty, you need to construe the other parts of the plan in a manner that further their implementation and not be in contrary, not be contrary to those." This is what the state actually says conformance looks like. So it's really talking about a couple parts of the plan and the code at the same time. So this is the plan plus code part. In the plan, we have land use categories. And those land use categories are the, that we have currently, we call area and place types. But there are things like urban, suburban, rural, neighborhoods, activity centers. And then we have goals and policies. We put those together because of number two and number three to make a finding of conformance. But how we make a finding of conformance and what we do with it is not in the plan. It's in Title 10 and Title 11 of the city code. So some of what we'll talk about tonight is not going to get written into the plan. We're going to have to come back with code amendments in order to properly do this part of the work. As I said, this is going to get very nitty gritty. So if I need to slow down or you have questions, pause, tell me to pause and we can talk through it. I first want to talk about what we did require in the past. And I think this is the too hot and too cold examples perhaps. The 2001 Regional Land Use and Transportation Plan really only required conformance with two maps. One was the land use plan and one was the roadway systems plan. It focused on approving specific land uses, which is unusual. It didn't, it sort of just skipped the zoning code and went straight to land uses. And then it had, it had some things that the current plan doesn't, which it had some neighborhood commercial land uses that we don't really have anymore. And it had a planning reserve area. So it had a lot of area where it just didn't give it a land use designation. And it said, "We can decide later." It was very narrow and only had 19 goals and 88 policies, but these were very rarely used in plan conformance analysis because trying, like basically if you wanted to build a gas station and the regional plan said this is a restaurant, you had to do a plan amendment to build the, right, the gas station. Like it was that specific. So that was maybe too detailed, too hot. Our current plan kind of skips the land use element conformance. It really uses the areas and place types that are on our future growth illustration to determine if a major or minor plan amendment is required. And then you don't really analyze that. You just start working through the goals and policies. And you have to work through 97 goals and 500 policies. And then identify which ones are conflicting and try and describe why they may be conflicting. And this gets you, this analysis gets you what I call the college essay-style staff reports you've been seeing, where there's about 15 to 20 pages of narrative going through all of these goals and policies. So these are, this is how our decision-making process has been in the past. Just to show you that the way you've seen it in the last three or four years is not the way we have always done it. And so adopting a new plan is our opportunity to reevaluate how you would like to see these decisions in some future staff report. What would you like them to look like? And how do you want to weigh them? So the current code has the following findings for a zoning map amendment. So this is when someone asks, "My property is owned rural residential and I would like it to be zoned highway commercial." It says, "The proposed map has to be consistent and conform with the goals of the general plan and any applicable specific plans." It does not say what part of the specific plan has to conform with. It's just very open-ended. It also says, "The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, inconvenience, and welfare." That's sort of the may not be contradictory to part of the state statute. And that it will add to the public good as described in the general plan. The words "public good" don't appear in the general plan. So this whole set of things requires quite a bit of staff interpretation. And it gives not a lot of clarity to applicants what it is that should be analyzed. Staff has come up with interpretations and examples that have helped people do that over time, but it's not because the code tells us exactly how to do it. From a text amendment perspective, it says, "Proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the objectives," which there are no objectives in the plan, "and policies of the general plan and any applicable specific plans." So if I read this very literally, which we tend to interpret it quite a lot, map amendments have to meet goals, but I could argue they don't meet policies. But we have always said they also have to meet related policies. And then maybe we have less emphasis on goals when there's an amendment. But we've really looked at this part of Title 10, both text and map amendments, and brought, made them do the same thing. Because this didn't quite fit and we didn't update this language last time. Then for Title 11, for specific plans, like the South Side specific plan or ones you might see in the future, like Sunnyside or Pineville-Branon or 4th Street, it says, "No specific plan may be adopted or amended unless the proposed plan or amendment is in substantial conformance with the general plan." I have no definition of what's conformance versus substantial conformance. So I think I'm walking you guys into what kind of things I have to explain and interpret over the last 10 years. And we've tried always to be very consistent so that we're offering more clarity and consistency across all applications. But all of this could be improved. Once we adopt a new plan, both the way we write the plan and we could bring you code amendments that make all of this a lot clearer. Yes?
So on that subject, you know, I, substantial conformance, like it's, it's left to the interpretation of who's looking at that request. Somebody, a staff member decides that this is what their interpretation is going to be. It just seems really ambiguous and vague. And, and sometimes vague is good so that we're not pigeonholed into one thing. But like, you know, what problems do you see with that? And, and how do we mitigate that vagueness? To make sure we're getting what we want and we're not creating higher costs in development and more frustration. I hear a lot from developers that, you know, the back and forth takes forever and we keep interpreting things differently than they do. So can you speak a few more minutes on that?
Councilwoman Matthews, that's a very good point. I think that one of the things that makes our process with the language we currently have to work with more difficult is that it creates a lot of back and forth. While having this language be general, very general, gives a lot of discretion to council in making a final decision, it also means staff has to be kind of paying attention to the temperature of council and what's going on that might be of interest to you at a given time. When there are 500 policies, that's a lot of things to keep our eye on. And then the applicant may or may not be as familiar with those recent community conversations and where council priorities are. It does, it creates a lot of dialogue. And that can be very good. That can help people refine their projects and meet community expectations. But it is an area where, as much as we have worked to be consistent, we have public, we have published plan interpretations, we have built outlines. I have personally built outlines for applicants to use in providing us narratives. I have helped them go through the regional plan. It requires a lot of staff time. It is not a simple interpretation. And so that's also staff time on the city side of the budget ledger, that could be done doing more proactive things, but is actually spent doing more of this dialogue work. So it's really, that's, it is kind of a long-term decision. Where would you like staff in these positions to be spending our time is a good part.
And that's, kind of gets to the bottom of my concern. We have multiple priorities in our community. And then we're spending a lot of staff time trying to interpret. And what I hear from the development community is that it's already a very thick tangled web. And I just, I have concerns about that. I'm just going to leave it right there that just, you know, back and forth, trying to interpret, trying to use staff time to help somebody to figure out what the temperature of the day is. You know, maybe I can see a lot of problems with that.
Right. And Councilwoman Matthews, the, council can help staff with this now by giving us feedback on, I have many, many, many slides. We really have to dive into this and get in the sandbox together about what could change. Because if, if you're behind getting some of the things we can add in terms of clarity into the code after a plan is ratified, we can start working on that ahead of time and be ready to bring you code changes right afterwards that, you know, has a shared vision of making the process clearer and easier to implement. So I'll keep going, but let's keep an eye on that as we're talking. So here's another set of findings that you may not be familiar with, that lives in our world. How does the proposed amendment affect the vision expressed in the written goals, objectives? Again, there are no objectives. And policies of the general plan that are most relevant to the proposed amendment? This is for when, let's say you're requesting a zoning map change, but the map change you want doesn't meet the land use category you have in the regional plan. So you need to change land use categories. So, and then it also says, "If it's inconsistent, you have to include your justification for why at the policy level and any proposal to modify or eliminate anything that's inconsistent." So. Any questions on that? You can see it's kind of a tangle, has a lot of similar terms. They don't all mean the same thing. The differences are, are something staff's been interpreting and we've been interpreting them for a while. So, but we feel like raising the awareness of them for this discussion is important. So you all looked at Chapters 4, which is the land use framework and some of the other material in the draft plan on May 2nd. I'll bring your mind back to that. During that discussion, we heard a couple things that we think start to help clean up the clarity here, but there's a few things that go with it. First, we heard that there was a lot of confusion about the table, which I have copies of here, if anybody wants a copy of, the Table of Zoning Compatibility for each land use category. Because we'll talk through that and you might want some examples. Let me give that to Georgiana real quick to hand out. So we heard lots of confusion. Why is this one 20 or more and this one 28 or more? And why is this 15 or more? So we have tried to make the densities in the updated draft more uniform so that that can be clearer. We're also trying to add clarity on when zoning applies and when density ranges apply because that was another key part of the table. We're also proposing to reorganize the guidelines under each land use category so they're more consistently fit under some subcategories. And then we're, for, we are going to move some policies and guidelines around to emphasize the land use element and the land use elements conformance. And then the fifth part of making this update successful will be thinking about ways the code could be updated. And the feedback that you give on number five affects all the other things in the list. So if, if the feedback on number five is a little different, I would do all of these things just a little different so that it stays consistent and we can make it implementable. So these five implementability issues tied to the land use framework are all really important and interwoven. So you've got this handout of the four density categories that we are proposing to use in describing density in the community. So we looked at 0 to 4, which is what we are calling low density, 5 to 14, medium density, 15 to 30, which would be a medium high, and then 31 plus. 31 plus is the category, the high density, that exceeds our current high-density residential zoning. We have buildings that are mixed-use that exceed 31 dwelling units per acre. They are buildings like the, you know, the Jack. They are buildings like the Uncommon. But there are buildings that are very similar sized, like Elara over next to Aspen Place, that look like they're the same building height and size, but they're actually more like 25 dwelling units per acre. So bear that in mind. The density can be tricky to describe visually because it also has to do with how much land is being used and how land beside the building is being used. But we think having these four categories will help people understand where we are on a scale a little more clearly. And we did truth these with some of the development community. So for instance, for low density, we talked to three of the developers who are developing greenfield development. They all felt that the overall density of their developments were coming in at like between 4.5 and 5. And whenever someone has a density calculation, we always round up or down. Whether they're at 4.5 or higher, they're, then we think of them as 5. If they're at 4.4, we think of them as a 4 dwelling unit per acre density. So bear that in mind too, that when you see these numbers, we kind of round around them. So maybe any questions on this of feedback on trying to simplify the list? Okay. So then the second piece on land use conformance, this is another little technical part of the plan to which we get a little bit more nitty gritty. And we're still making refinements to this. This is not the final version, but one we want to talk about, is that we have this table we put together and the table has two pieces that are really important. You can ignore the last column, which is the county zoning. We are not going to talk about county zoning tonight. That's a whole different area. But we have a column about future density and intensity, which would correlate to that table, which is why I gave you guys handouts. And then compatible zoning categories. And the way we would propose to use this table is if that someone comes in and they're want to request rezoning into an existing compatible zoning category, that would be the only hurdle for the table. We would not also hold them to the density and intensity. And the reason we would do that is the densities allowed in these categories can change over time based on text amendments that the Planning and Zoning Commission and council approve. So we wouldn't tie people to them. But for instance, let's look at suburban neighborhood. When you look at this table, I know it gets a little less clear than some things. But basically, in a suburban neighborhood, in our urban growth boundary, which is mostly what we would be concerned about in the city, you would, we would be looking in the long run, this future density, to have five dwelling units an acre or more, similar to the large greenfield developments that we've seen starting to be proposed in the John Wesley Powell area. But if somebody in this area comes in and they want to rezone a property from their current entitlements to one of these existing zones, R1 and R1N actually allow lower densities than 5. So we wouldn't necessarily make people have to meet both columns. They would meet the first one. And if they don't meet the first one, existing compatible zoning category, then we would look at their proposal with the future desired density in mind. So it's not, it's not an "and," it would be an "or." And the order would be category then density. And I have like several examples to talk you through on that. But are there any questions about that intent?
Can I just ask you, where is that written? That you would not make them do both but or?
It's in that little paragraph that says "city only." Do you want me to read it? Do you want me to read it? It's at the top, right under the header. It says, "This table is used to determine compatible zoning categories for findings of conformance and related category guidelines. If an application is requesting a zoning category other than those listed below, it may be considered if the proposal meets the future desired density and intensity and conforms to the category guidelines in this chapter. Future desired density and intensity is not considered then when the requested zoning category is compatible." That's basically a very long way of saying "or not and." In the way an attorney would understand, Mr. Solomon. Any questions about that?
Definitely looking forward to some examples. You mentioned earlier neighborhood, suburban, or suburban neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't see that written on here. Maybe?
It's the other side.
Oh.
It's a two-pager.
The other, the R sheet doesn't have two sides.
Sorry. I know, I gave you a handout at the last minute. No problem. So this table, and this map, would start to become our codex of how to look at things at the front counter, things at a pre-application meeting, right? So imagine that someone comes in, and they say, "I want to build, I want to subdivide my property and build more single-family homes, 20 single-family homes on my 10 acres." We would come to the map, we start looking at the yellow area. Okay, you're in yellow, great, you're in a suburban neighborhood. Okay, R1 lets you build two dwelling units an acre, and it's allowed in a suburban neighborhood. Then we would tell them, "Go ahead and put in your application, it's time to see what your proposal is." That gives us a really clear direction when we look at it that way. Now if they came in and said, "I want to do something, but I don't want to use that category," then we would be, have, then we would start looking at more detail before they came in for an application. So for people who are doing something really direct, it would create a little certainty that it's time to put in your application, and let's get started. And as I said, this is, we're still kind of refining some of these lists. But just to look at these more closely, what you see is a lot, that whenever you see a "C" in here, it's often a commercial zone. The "R," "M.R." and "H.R." are higher-density residential zones. So the densest areas that we want to see in the community, the centers, have the zones that allow the highest density. The corridors also allow pretty high density, but they're more moderate on some of the commercial uses. And those, I think, are really important for people to know, that we are looking to kind of head in this direction, but also, there's language here that's important. In urban corridor, it says that it's high when residential or mixed-use is proposed. It is not our intent that if you have a fully commercial use in one of these commercial districts, that we are penalizing you because you don't have any density. That's not the intent here. So we would not apply density to projects that have no density. That was an area of confusion for people, like, "Well, what if, I want to take off part of my parcel, and I want to just make it a commercial use?" So that's not the intent here, just want to make sure that's really clear, before we keep going. On the neighborhood side, we've refined the future desired densities and intensities based on the feedback we got at that May 2nd retreat, which, in urban neighborhoods, we've sort of created two categories. We've said if you're in an urban neighborhood that's not a historic district, we really are trying to get you to high and medium-high, and if you're in a historic district, medium-high and medium are what we're trying to go. We're trying to kind of balance that. In suburban neighborhoods, because some suburban neighborhoods are in the county, they're in Kachina or Belmont, we have made the distinction that if you're in the urban growth boundary, so you're getting water and sewer from us. We would like to see you in the medium, medium-high and high. If you're outside the urban growth boundary, medium and low are more reasonable. So think about the townhomes in Belmont. Those are in that medium category. They're not going to be, we might also see those in Flagstaff, but in the urban growth boundary, that's kind of the minimum we want to see, is something in small lots, something with that medium density. And the whole idea is that over time, working with our zoning code manager, and council, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we would work to raise the densities, so that the disparity between the compatible categories and the future desired densities is smaller over time. Any questions on the neighborhood side?
So, this, the second, this contingency category, the future desired density, does that always allow for more density? Or is there any situation in which, if you don't like the existing compatible zoning category, because you want less density, you can shift over to get what you want by invoking future density category? Or is, is that arrow always in one direction? Or are there scenarios on here where you can ask for less density?
Councilmember Aslan, I, we did not imagine that we would allow it to kind of work the other way, where you could elect out necessarily. I mean, I think, you know, there, sometimes our zoning code has been called by staff, a choose-your-own-adventure zoning code. So, and I think that adds to the uncertainty piece, is if we give people a lot of paths to get to, through the process of determining plan conformance, it can add more uncertainty, and not the flexibility we're looking for sometimes. So, I think we're trying to find a way of having flexibility, but having it be a single path, so that there's not, there's not as much confusion. And we don't have people spending money and time and resources on projects that we ultimately can't get behind.
Thank you. I think that's generally the answer I was hoping for. There was a little hedge in there, the way you said it. We did not imagine, is, is there a yes or no answer to that question? Or are you not wanting to get pegged into some, some weird, you know, it's, it sounds like you may be aware that some loopholes exist there?
Councilmember Aslan, I didn't mean to give that impression. I think the impression I was trying to give is, is we haven't like dotted every "I" and crossed every "T."
Gotcha.
So if council gave direction tonight that they wanted more flexibility in how the table could be interpreted, we would go back to our partners at the county, and we'd talk to legal, and we would come up with a revision. That's really what I meant.
Gotcha, thank you.
So we're, we're pretty far down the feasibility and implementability train. Does everybody feel okay? Choo-choo, keep going, all right. All right, so last chance for questions, before I try and throw some bivariant examples your way. You ready? Okay, keep your handouts on hand. So example one, the owner of a property wants to rezone from RR, rural residential, which is up to one dwelling unit per acre, to R1, which is two dwelling units per acre, to about seven. Is that correct? Michelle's going to jump in if I get any of those wrong. If the property we're talking about is in a suburban neighborhood, so looking at your table, there's no plan amendment required, because R1's a compatible zone on the list. So we're going to have them put in an application, show them the suburban neighborhood guidelines, start working. If the property is in a rural neighborhood, this is also fine. So this is, there's two places in our, in our community where this, really, this category change would be just fine. Just need to look at the category guidelines. And the category guidelines for suburban neighborhood and rural neighborhood are different in terms of the mix of uses and variety of housing. They're different in the design considerations. They're different in their connectivity expectations. They are different in their expectations for parks and open space, and that's the list. So those are the variables that we would be looking at most closely for plan conformance. Owners who want to build an apartment building. Property owner says, "I'd like to build apartments on my property, it's on a suburban corridor." The current zoning could, in a lot of our existing suburban corridors, is highway commercial or community commercial. Highway commercial is by far the most common. That's allowed, right now, with a use permit, using high-density residential standards, which as I said, go up to about 29 dwelling units per acre. And it's allowed by right as part of a mixed-use development. So, nobody even needs to open the plan in that scenario. We, we have already made that decision as a community. If the current zoning on the property, let's say it's in a greenfield area, or it's just outside of an existing neighborhood on a, maybe remnant parcel, is zoned R1. A good example of that is the condos that were built as part of Presidio, actually were R1 originally, they were imagined as like a church, and they came back and they wanted them to be condos. There is a zoning map amendment required for that. You could choose HC or HR, depending on what fit in that property. There's a lot of circumstances you might want to consider for that, for a property owner. And then, then, once you do your amendment, no plan amendments required for that. You're in a compatible zone, if you're in HR. You have to meet the requirements. So then you're going to open the suburban corridor guidelines, and look at those, which talk about apartments being appropriate, whether there is commercial or not. So this is another example of like, how will we be navigating these tables with people? So this is again, the same ask, two different places on the map, we navigate through those slightly differently. Any questions on example one and two, before I jump? Councilmember House?
And I apologize, because this might be nitpicking on the examples, but I, I'm looking at the tables here, and looking at the example of an owner wanting to build apartments in a suburban corridor, or SEO. I'm looking at the existing compatible zoning categories, and I guess the question is, how is it zoned, currently zoned R1, if that's not listed as an existing compatible zoning?
Because it was zoned R1 in 1985, Councilmember House, and we had a different plan, and maybe the property owner changed twice since then. And so, and this happens all the time, right? The, the, once you're zoned into a category, you can be in there for a really long time, and it can sit vacant, and that's when people really forget what the future uses were on the property. But, yeah, we might have zoned it a long time ago, before we adopted a general plan, or under a different general plan, or maybe just under a different property owner who then couldn't make their development happen. Maybe it went into an estate trust. All kinds of things like that are pretty common. So, not nitpicky, definitely in the weeds where I'm hoping you'll be thinking.
So, along those same lines, then, where it says that the zoning map amendment would be required to HC or HR, why is that necessary if it's currently a, an existing compatible zoning category now?
Well, so R1 is not listed as an existing compatible zoning category in suburban corridor. And apartment buildings generally can't be built in R1. There's not, it's not an allowed density and use that you would find in that zone today. So, now, if a property is zoned R1, and council changes the density requirements for R1, that would be different. That'd be a text amendment. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, that was a good third scenario. Same question, third scenario, like it. Any other questions before I jump to three? All right. Three is, somebody wants to build a five-story apartment building in a suburban neighborhood. And that seems pretty big, right? Five stories is, is one of our larger apartment building sizes. And I put the first example just to remind us, if we put it as a suburban neighborhood on the regional plan, but it's currently zoned highway commercial, we aren't going to crack open the regional plan for this case. It's going to be allowed as a use permit using HR standards, or allowed by right as part of a mixed-use development. Alara is a great example, the one right behind the 1 AZ Bank, of an apartment building that is more like 28 dwelling units an acre. It is not in our high category, but it's five stories. So, that's kind of a, I think when people think of things like 25 or so, they're thinking of the garden apartments in the Woodlands Village area. But those actually have very similar densities to the Alara one. So the code, so the code already covers it, we aren't even going to look at the first example, at example kind of 3A at the regional plan. But if it were zoned R1, we would talk to them about a zoning map amendment category to HC or HR. And maybe they want to build five stories, because they want to set aside part of their property as open space. Or maybe it's because part of their property is so steep, it's too expensive to develop. Maybe it's because there is, you know, some special memory or something. I, I, you can't always tell what the reason is. But there, there might be like, they only want to develop 50% of the parcel, they want to put all the density over there, and it's going to be five stories. If it's zoned R1 currently, the zoning map amendment would not require a plan amendment, because you might be shifting density around. We kind of call that clustering. You're not using the whole site, but the whole site is being, all the density on the site is being developed at the same time. It would still need to conform with suburban neighborhood guidelines. That could be a challenge for a five-story apartment building. They're going to have to probably look real closely at the features on their site plan to make this work here. So that might be one of those cases that would be, we wouldn't require a plan amendment for it, but it might come before council with a lot of controversy, and a lot of conflicting community values, and not be the easiest decision. But it's also not one that would quite trigger a plan amendment. Questions about this one? I expected questions on this one.
Thank you. Your final bullet point there, conform to suburban neighborhood guidelines. Have those guidelines been written?
Yes. You actually had them as part of your May 2nd packet. And now they are kind of organized into those five categories I discussed with example one. So connectivity, how much bike and road connectivity should be happening in and around a site. Mixed, mix of uses and variety of housing, that's kind of more self-explanatory. Other design considerations, so there's some, some language in there about design work that's maybe not directly part of either of those first categories. Parks, so is there park space included, or how are parks laid out in this category? Oh, and then you made me forget the last one. But there's the fifth one, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you.
So not, not every goal and policy, but these five things that really help design sites. Okay.
I have a quick question, that may pertain to this, it may not. I was just thinking about the development on Fourth and Butler on the northeast side that hasn't been finished yet. Is that highway commercial, is that why they were able to get the height and, and such? And also, you talked about steep slopes, and then that's a sloping area as well.
Right, Councilmember Garcia, thank you. That, that is another good example of why a site might have a very large apartment building, but not be very dense. I think that is called Elks Crossing? Elks Crossing is that one. They are, that parcel's actually in suburban center currently, in our current plan, and it is a mixed-use site. So, what you, what they have not even started developing, they've started doing like the pad development, site grading for, is that there'll be a little commercial space in the front, and then you'll go up the hill to the apartments. It's kind of the best they could do on a site that's steep. But, yeah, their density is all tucked back from the road, in a lot of ways, and will have kind of a commercial area that screens it when it's finally developed. So that'd be a good example of, maybe not the kind of, maybe the apartments being held back a little bit, and being large, not using the whole site in a suburban neighborhood, but on a suburban corridor, or a suburban center, that would be more common. Thank you. Any other questions or examples with this one? Okay. We're halfway through examples. I told you we were diving all the way into the details, right?
I just want to say that these examples are very helpful.
Thank you, Mary. All right. So example four, is we have a property in a rural neighborhood. So take your mind to some of the neighborhoods where people So take your mind to some of the neighborhoods where people have chickens and, you know, horses and, you know, are riding ATVs off into the forest right from their backyard. These are pretty rural areas. There's a property owner who comes in and they'd like to have a small subdivision. Maybe they have 20 acres or 10 acres. They want to rezone it to R1. There's no plan amendment required because R1's a compatible zone and they're gonna conform to the region, the rural neighborhood policies. That's easy. But let's say they actually have that clustering problem again and they want to rezone to a mix of housing of R1 and MR. MR is not listed as a compatible zone in a rural neighborhood. So, we might be requiring a minor plan amendment for that because it's not in a compatible zone. Again, this example, I am kind of assuming that it's in the urban growth boundary and that we could have some more medium-density sort of development on it. Maybe that means it's, you know, a few, you know, five-acre lots and a couple 10-town homes. It's no, those might not be really big. But adding a plan amendment would mean we have to look at it a little more closely. So this could trigger that. And if they were doing a plan amendment to go from a rural neighborhood to a suburban neighborhood, which does support that wider mix of housing types, they'd have to look at the suburban neighborhood policies. So we don't have, when someone is proposing a plan amendment, we analyze, and this is the way we do it now. We analyze their amendment against their proposed category. We don't analyze it against their current category. So, that's just one of those practices that's useful to know. Oh, any questions on four before I move on to five? Okay. I'm gonna get into a more urban example. So, an owner wants to build, you know, maybe they have a very small lot in the downtown or north of downtown and they want to build eight units of apartments in their parcel within an urban neighborhood. Or this could also apply in Sunnyside or Southside. And they go, I want to put eight apartments on this lot. The way we have laid out this distinction of are you in a historic district or not might influence that. So if it's in a parcel that's currently zoned community commercial, like the whole south end of Sunnyside is and most of the Southside is, that is allowed with a use permit. And so we don't even require a zoning map amendment or a plan amendment to do this. Let's say it's currently zoned R1N, which has not, would probably not allow you quite eight units, three or four maybe is the most you could get in that category of zoning. You'd need to rezone it to HR probably. And it would matter how big your lot is. So this is one of those fine-tuned things about urban neighborhoods if we want to adjust the table the way we've proposed. Is, you'd need a minimum lot size. You basically, by splitting out the categories the way we did, you need about a quarter acre to get eight units. If you had less than this and you were in a historic district, you'd have to chop a unit or two off to meet the, the density categories. And you'd still need to meet urban neighborhood guidelines. Now, this is one where, as Tiffany, our zoning code manager and I were talking about it, and I think she might be on, might, she didn't make it on tonight. There are also things to think about that the zoning code itself might not let you get these eight units. We do have a lot of things like onsite requirements for LID and parking and setbacks in zones that might keep you from achieving eight units here. So this, in these urban redevelopment settings, it's more complicated. It's hard to make that predictable because there's so much variation on the type which gets, over time, which gets back to Councilmember House's question about, well, how did this end up R1? How did most of Sunnyside end up CC and HR? You know, there's always a lot of history and some of those have been that way for a long time and the zoning category requirements have been changing over time. It's really hard to kind of track down those pinpoint moments. But looking forward, if we were getting a lot of requests like this, so say, so say councils trying to support more affordable housing in our urban neighborhoods, have a little more density in them, but we're getting a lot of these requests that we can't bring to you because we can't get the zoning code to meet them, that might trigger staff trying to talk to you about it and bring you a plan, and bring you a zoning code text amendment to kind of move forward. So we would be on the lookout for kind of the tricky scenarios like this where we're having the code plus plan issues and be bringing back map zoning text amendments that address them over time. Maybe this property owner can figure it out because they have .28 acres and, so they got like three little 25, they have a 75-foot by 100-foot lot. It lets them have some room to meet all the parking requirements and they figure it out. But maybe to see more of these, we might have to make some adjustments if this is desirable. Questions?
How did you come up with the number for the historical district?
Oh, the .67. I measured, well, so almost all of our historic lots in the original townsite subdivision are 100 feet deep. And they all started off as 25-foot lots. So, most of the lots you see here are 25 or 50. We have very few 25s left, but there are a few. Most of them are 50 and then some of them are 75 or 100 because there were about eight 25-foot lots per block.
Just from historical reference?
Yeah.
Thank you, I think that's appropriate.
No problem. But still, it seems pretty small, right? So, just wanted to get those across. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for legal staff and then I'm gonna follow up with, for the plan. What, what is the state statute that allows a, the owner of a parcel to sue the city for damages or loss of, of value if there's a zoning change?
So it's, it's commonly known as Prop 207. I could get you the actual statutory citation. I don't have it memorized. I should, but it's basically any change that the government institutes through a, like you mentioned, through a change in the zoning that they can actually represent or establish that there has been a decrease in value to their property. We've been through many of those situations. And yeah, we could get you more information on that if you'd like.
Thank you. I, you're, you're, you're giving me what I need to ask my next question. So, is there anything in this regional plan development and as we're looking at, at the zoning changes that might come from it, is there anything that would prompt these Proposition 207 claims that by doing this regional plan or by doing the code amendments that we're decreasing somebody's property value?
So Councilmember Spence, the regional plan is not in and of itself going to change anyone's entitlements. So, I think that's why I've been bringing in the example one a lot of the time is that example one shows they can just develop using their existing entitlements. The thing that kind of keeps Prop 207 or an ID, the private, I think it's called the Private Property Rights Protection Act is how you can look it up in the statute, is that you have to actually make that change, the property. But property owners, when they're rezoning their properties, are requesting the rezoning. And generally, Leo can correct me if I'm wrong, we have them sign a waiver. If there is any question that they're losing some property rights with the change they're requesting, that says, yes, I did this knowingly and I'm not gonna ask for a waiver after requesting my zoning request. So, this, what the plan really changes is like, what is easy to request and what is more challenging to request? So it sets those bars for expectations.
I appreciate that. The only thing I would weigh in on, and by the way, it's in ARS 121134. I just had a little brain cramp on that, but everybody knows that. But to make a very long story short, the regional plan is commonly referred to in, in many other cities as the general plan. They provide general land use guidelines under regional plans, general plans. The actual zoning code and changes to the, the text of the zoning code is really where you get into Prop 207 issues, not so much the regional plan.
Thank you.
So it, what I'm hearing you say is, we have to stay tuned as we go through our code amendments. We, we need to be paying attention when that comes up.
And we're always paying attention to. We make sure on those, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Spence, because of the core priorities of the plan, which we'll talk about in a couple slides, of carbon neutrality and housing affordability and all the scenario planning, we're doing, most categories are pushing for increased density, which generally gives you more property rights and more value. All right. Example six is what if staff, let's move away from a property owner. What if we want to bring you an amendment to the zoning code? And there's lots of potential amendments that you could see through staff requests in the next few years. But one you might see is that we want to increase the range of density allowed in some zone. We want to allow for high-density residential to allow 40 dwelling units an acre instead of just up to 29 units an acre, some changes like that. We would evaluate those proposals against the future desired densities and the guidelines because we are making a change to the code and the zoning, and the compatible zoning categories. If that change was also going to change which categories were compatible with urban neighborhood or urban center or suburban neighborhood, then we might also have to do a plan amendment. But the way the administrative changes are written, if it were just adding a new category or changing something without changing the category name, we don't have to do anything special in terms of a plan amendment with that. Another thing you might see us request is updating housing and sustainability incentives, which we have both of in our code. And that would need to be evaluated against the goals and policies of the plan. Certainly, they may not directly affect density, but it might affect how we're moving towards our core priorities. And then at the bottom of the slide, I have a couple other examples just to spark your imagination on other kinds of things we might try and discuss in terms of code updates. And so, again, the staff version ones, we might have to do a little more, a little more discussion. The density categories may or may not apply depending on the kind of change it is. If we're just changing parking requirements and we're not directly changing density, then it might not be relevant. So, we'll have to have a little flexibility in, in this group because it's not always as easy as the property owners. They come in and ask for something fairly consistent over time. All right. So now I want to get back to the art of the possible. We've walked through several examples, which I think have, have helped everybody get in the weeds with me. So, going back to the code part of it, we have these findings. And as we went through them, Councilmember Matthews and the mayor and others all noticed, they have a lot of general language and not a lot of specifics. We actually did some looking at the state statute and looking at other cities in Arizona and how they're interpreting that. And lots of cities just have the same kind of general language we do. They tend to have it be more consistent throughout their titles, but they, they just say like general conformance essentially. But what we learned from a few is that several cities have started to get more specific about what does conformance mean in their code, which can be really helpful. And I think if we headed in that direction, which is, would mean not only putting a plan on the ballot, but coming back with code updates too, it would get us closer to that state statute's intent. It would help really focus on the land use part, the land use conformance portion of the plan. And it would help us really think through how many of the priorities are being implemented and if they're contrary or helpful. It also could help us shorten or create more focused analysis when we are looking at goals and policies. So, a potential way that staff discussed making revised or newer conformances for zoning code amendments would be first to have these separated out into four separate findings. The first one would be, does it conform to the guidelines in the land use framework? So it is in the right category? Does it follow the guidelines? Are there any issues with that? Finding two then, could be, does it further at least one plan priority? And is it not in contradiction with other plan priorities? And this is an idea we actually got from Gilbert's Code. Gilbert has, I think they call them implementation strategies or something along those lines. But some examples of that could be, if someone is bringing in a manufacturer to an industrial site, they're not gonna have housing possibly as part of their site. So they're not gonna look at the housing affordability policy priority necessarily. And they're probably not gonna look at our mixed-use neighborhood priority because they're just not relevant. So having something like this lets them say, here are the priorities that apply in our project and we have six of them, so they can pick one or two. And then just pointing out that they're not in contradiction with any of the others. That can really shorten, but still get you the information you need to know if this is furthering a priority or is it not. And also there are other policy maps, like our road network and our trail network that we'd want to ensure people conform with. But we could look at that separately and have that be finding three. And then finding four could be, does it conform to a specific plan? So this starts to split out the three parts of the general plan we want you to look at and then are there, is there anything in a specific plan that applies essentially? I think this, something like this, it doesn't have to be this, there could be alternatives to this, adds a ton of clarity when someone is looking at, how do I create a narrative that shows council and staff that my project conforms with the plan? Are there questions about this?
So Sarah, this, this slide is showing an alternative to the findings that we are now to consider currently when there is someone wanting to do a zoning amendment. Is that correct?
Correct.
And your methodology to this is, is just to make it clearer and easier to understand?
Yes, Councilmember Matthews. And this is a thing that we're not ready to like bring you code language. But if this is an idea that council wants us to head towards, there are probably some things I won't write in the plan or that I will write very carefully so that on day one, we can use the findings we have. And on the day where we're ready with code amendments, we can adopt code amendments that clarify our findings. And that's, that's like the level at which I am nitpicking the document for feasibility and implementability right now. But I do, I, that's really why I'm here, is this kind of feedback helps me set a course and think through kind of those uncertainties that, you know, really we're talking about in the next 12 to 18 months. And also, this kind of creates a new project that Tiffany and Michelle and I need to get working on so that it's prepared to move quickly. I'll keep going. So since we talked about the priorities, under each priority in the plan is where the goals and policies show up. So back in this finding, when we said it furthers at least one priority, again, going back to that state language, and is not in contradiction with other plan priorities. The, if, if council looks at these, and as we said, they're kind of a universe of priorities. They're all interrelated. And the applicant only describes their narrative about one priority, we can still in the staff report talk about if there's anything else that's beneficial, if there is any contradictions we see or any big issues with other policies. It's just that the applicant wouldn't necessarily have to include that. So that's just to give you an idea of how that might work. The other plan maps are ones that look a little more like this, right? This is our streets functional classification and our planned bikeways by class. If someone came in and they were under finding three under our potential new findings, because they're not even proposed yet, they wanted to not build a bikeway through some portion or they wanted to change a bikeway, we would have to look at if that requires a plan amendment. They'd have to describe that for you in their report. So now I want to move on to think about projects that require a plan amendment. Currently, if you request a zoning map amendment, Currently, if you request a zoning map amendment, you do the same analysis whether or not you've requested a plan amendment. It's exactly the same. We could, and this is, we're in the art of the possible right now. We could set it so that if you're not doing a plan amendment, you have a shorter analysis. And that if you are doing a plan amendment, because you are essentially cracking open the plan and changing some of these fundamental assumptions, you do a little more analysis. So we could write it so that if you are in the plan amendment side of things, you're not just looking at one of these priorities. You have to look at the whole thing now. You've stepped up a level. You have to do a little more thorough analysis. To me, that makes a lot of sense. We've not done that in the past. But I think that also helps people maybe think about how to make their proposal fit the plan more, right? We're creating incentives and disincentives when we set up this system. So this is the kind of thing of saying, not only do you have to do those things for your zoning map amendment, but then you have a slightly different analysis. You have to go more in depth because you're also requiring a plan amendment. So think about the examples we looked at. And think about if having this two-step level of analysis fits what you'd want to see in staff reports in 2027. Because ultimately, all of this is to help you have consistent and reliable decision-making tools. I'll let everyone mull that one for a minute.
I just wonder, is there a hierarchy of which goals are more inconsistent than other ones? Is that, have you thought about that at all?
Councilmember Aslan, we do describe in the plan draft that there are core priorities and then there's these complementary priorities. We could take feedback on how those get looked at. And likewise, we don't have to solve that with the draft plan. We could carry that discussion into updating the code about findings, certainly. That's one of those things of how vague do you want it to be and specific in which document? Usually planners think about specificity going in zoning codes and in codes and then the more general things staying in the plan. So kind of right now, what I'd imagine is that we'd stay a little vague on how to use the priorities, but we could talk about that when we were looking at alternative ways to make findings. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the only one of these that I had or would have a question on is that potential new conforming finding number four of the proposal to modify or eliminate the inconsistent goals, objectives, and policies. I'm wondering what the difference is between that and justification for the exception? I guess the, like more of the question there is who's determining that they are inconsistent and like inconsistent as it pertains to what? Like those sorts of questions are coming to mind. So if this is a developer saying that a goal is inconsistent with the rest of the plan or is it just that it's inconsistent with what they want to do? Like that's where I'm getting confused by that language and wondering how that differs from the idea of them justifying that maybe an exception is needed because of it not, what they're wanting to do, not fully complying with the stated goals or objectives of the plan.
Yes, Councilmember House, we have this language right now in our plan amendment procedures, actually. So the way it generally has worked is that, yes, they have, usually we let the applicant in their narrative kind of say, I think my project or my proposal should be exempted because I can't do, a good example is like I can't do this resource protection and do this other thing that the plan wants to do, is an example. Or I can't do this building kind of design, our current plan is very design-oriented, and achieve the, you know, goal of having housing affordability, right? So sometimes they can write that and it is up to council and staff if we agree or disagree with that. Opposals to modify or an eliminate an inconsistent goal, objective, or policy will almost always trigger a major plan amendment in the draft plan. In the next slide, I'll explain that a little more. And so that will kind of raise the analysis level again. But we have done that for our specific plans. For instance, the high occupancy housing plan changed some goals and policies and deleted some because we were doing a real analysis of how is the plan working? And as I said, up to this point, we had 500 goals or 500 policies, so there were a lot. And at times we said, well, this is just creating too many conflicts. If we have these bigger goals of community, we need to strike this one and add something that's a little different. So I think there's not been a lot of private development proposals that have fully wanted to modify or eliminate a goal or policy. They've usually been able to find a way to work with it or justify why their proposal needs an exemption. And then that's, of course, at your discretion as a body to exempt or not. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't necessarily want development to dictate the plan. And I see that through these four questions or examples of how to move forward, it doesn't necessarily do that. It gives the community the opportunity to intervene while giving development a place to have less or to have more efficiencies moving forward. So while we're going through, if you can point out for the next slides where we streamline development issues to where we're losing development because of the old plan as opposed to the new plan? If you could highlight that for me, I'd appreciate it. And also if you could also highlight where the community values are driving the plan, but also sticking with the development having a better opportunity to get their development in. I'd appreciate that.
Councilmember Garcia, I think that is a really complicated thing. I think that the, you know, the overall direction of the current plan is that there are so many goals and policies, it just creates a lot of uncertainty. And sometimes we're pretty far in to a site plan that goes with your direct-to-ordinance rezoning case when we find you've got an inconsistency. It's, I like to think of it this way. Earlier in the process, we find an issue that might be a conformance issue and we can work on it the easier and less costly it is to fix. If we are four reviews in and then we find there's a consistency issue because you've just done your 500 policy analysis, that's the expensive time to fix it. So it's sort of that, we think the same thing about like our deferred maintenance, right? Is that if we pay for it early, when the problem's not as bad, it's not as expensive to fix. But if you've gone very far into the details, it adds a lot of costs. And the important thing, I think, is that the community values get clarified and represented early in the process and that they're, so one of the things that has to do is we have to get away from 500 things at a time. And we have to walk them into a process that says, if you're doing something that's fairly simple and overall is considered compatible, we are going to have a more focused analysis. Where if you're doing something that's more complicated or less in line with the plan, then the analysis gets bigger and more complicated. And that, I think, helps let things that we've already said in these tables that we want to see move a little more swiftly. And the things that we would like to see more discussion of end up in that pot. And if we are eight months into this plan implementation and we discover the right stuff isn't ending up in front of council or the right things aren't being done back and forth. The last time, we did do some minor amendments when we kind of had an after-action and we had some time to implement it. And I don't think staff would be opposed to that entirely. Again, if we, we wouldn't be making any big changes. But if we got there and we said, ah, there's some nuances that as we have been implementing it for a year, we think we need to come back to and talk about, that's an open dialogue we'd want to have at work sessions. And we'd want to keep you informed on plan implementation so that that's not very far off course.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you. So, I mean, it's good that we, you know, can pivot when we start implementing this, you see our problems. But that also creates problems for us on council because we take one thing to the voters and then we, a year later, we start changing those things, right? I know it can't be completely avoided, but I'd like to try to address some of those things now. So we're not facing those because that was one thing that I noticed before I ran for office was, why do we even have a regional plan? Because we just change it every other day.
Right. And Councilmember Matthews, we really did not have, we did not give ourselves as much time as we did this time to do this feasibility and implementability check. That was very, because the plan, I think I've explained this at a long ago meeting. But the committee that met the entire five years that the plan was being reviewed was such kind of a drag on the overall process in terms of it was just hard to make quorums and decisions were getting delayed over and over again, that some of this implementation stuff got very compressed at the end. So the plan we adopted, we ratified with the voters in 2014, was not ready to implement on day one. We had not had, we had not had enough time to vet it with staff and legal and council in advance of hearings to the extent that we wanted. And that was, I conducted about 20 after-action reviews because I came onto this job right after council sent it to the ballot. And that was one of the clear things that the attorneys and the planners from both the city and county told me. They're like, whoo, the tail end of this got really, really rushed. And then 12 months later, I was back making huge process amendments. And I hope we're, I think we've taken that lesson to heart and it's part of why we're here today to have this conversation is I hope if we do have to come back, I don't want to take it off the table, but they would be very small changes. They'd be adjustments that are from the kind of things that we've done. Everything we can to anticipate, but sometimes you still have a surprise.
So on these suggested potential new conformance findings, I'm trying to draw from the top of my head what the current findings are. And they're pretty simple, you know, does this, you know, have a community benefit, stuff like this? But when you look at these, you've got, like, on number one, are we saying that the amendment is consistent and conforms with all the goals and policies and guidelines? And then we talk about justification for an exemption for the written goals, objectives, objectives, and policies. And then four is a proposal to modify and eliminate the inconsistent goals. You know, it's just, it's just really focusing on that. And I can't imagine a plan amendment having to meet all of the goals. And it kind of reads like that, that, because you could go back and say, wow, you want this plan amendment, but you haven't met all the goals. I don't, is that really an expectation that we have moving forward? That any plan amendments, they have to meet, still have to meet all the goals and objectives that we have?
Let me, let me talk about that a little, Councilmember Matthews. So currently, even something that's just a zoning map amendment has to consider whether it conforms with all the 500 goals and policies of our current plan. Keeping this language for a plan amendment means only the things that rise to the level of triggering a plan amendment. And as we ran through the examples, you can see there's not, maybe there's some, but there's not as many maybe because we've offered more paths to get to the right place. It, they wouldn't have to meet with everything in that case. But in the case of if you're doing a plan amendment, yes, you'd have to look at 80 goals, 80 or 60, depending on where we end up with final edits, policies. But it is a tenth of what a current applicant has to look at. And that doesn't mean we're missing any topics, like the key topics are all still there. They'll still have to look at dark skies. They'll still have to look at natural and cultural resources. They'll still have to look at whether or not they're providing a variety of housing types. They'll still have to look if affordable housing is part of every neighborhood. They'll still have to look at their building energy efficiency. It's just that it won't be said so many times in so many different ways. And I think that's been the real challenge under the current plan. And maybe this would be a good time for Michelle to talk a little bit about that level of detail in zoning amendments and. Yeah, I think so.
Hi, I'm Michelle McNulty, planning director. I'm kind of hesitant to bring this up right now, but I think when we talk about kind of making the process easier, you know, right now we have two paths for a rezone. You have the concept rezone and then we have a direct-to-ordinance. And the concept rezone, the spirit of it was to make it a little bit easier to do a rezone without having to bring the site plan forward because so many, so often it's that, during that site plan process where you have a lot of that back and forth. And a rezone really should be a legislative decision, does it comply with the regional plan? So that's why we've really brought in the land use designations and kind of assigning them a zoning district that would implement them so that we can kind of get back to that truer idea of a concept rezone. So that's why I kind of hate mixing this conversation with that, but it's kind of this general conversation of how we are trying to make good decisions easy and then decisions that maybe we need a little more information to understand, is that a good decision? Maybe it does need a different level of site plan associated with it or a different level of review. Knowing that if we don't make the process more easy, people have their underlying zoning, which means that for a lot of our large property owners or large property holdings that are in that lower-density zoning, if we don't make this process easier, we're going to be forcing them, they could just develop with their underlying rights. So I know we're talking about the findings for a major and minor plan amendments, but just trying to maybe talk about the spirit of which we're trying to change this whole entire process.
So I get what you're saying, but I mean, 80 goals seems like. I don't remember that, like when we were doing the hospital, it wasn't, I didn't look at the findings that we had to consider and think that I had to go back and see if it met all 500 goals or whatever it was. It was worded different, I guess, is what I'm getting at. Is there any thought to maybe saying, does it conform with our top priority goals? Like the little chart with the little, you know, housing and sustainability and just those instead of, I mean, 80 just seems to be a lot.
Yeah, no, I would agree. And that's why we really tried to put the goals and policies that apply to a development in chapter three and then kind of putting the goals and policies that are more on a city decision, like a code change or a program change in that so that they're not applying to private development. So I think it lessens it quite a bit. I think your point's well-taken in that this is the place to put that prioritization. I think it actually is in the regional plan and not in the zoning code. The zoning code will talk to the findings, but it's really this plan that needs to talk to that prioritization.
Councilmember Aslan.
Yeah, just to add to the conversation a little bit. The way I'm thinking about this, to use an analogy, is that, you know, developers, they have to color within the lines. We want them to color within the lines. We want lines. What I'm seeing is that this process, which is laudable, is that it's making it easier for developers to color within the lines. What we don't want is to make it easier for developers to color outside the lines. And I think that's a very clear distinction that should be kept front and center. This process isn't to make, it's not to make it easier for developers to do whatever they want. It's to make it easier for developers to do what we want.
Should I continue? Okay, thank you. So I also want to remind you that we, another way we're streamlining, and this is maybe to... to get to Councilmember Garcia's question of how we're making things more effective and simpler, is we did simplify and decrease the number of major plan amendment categories. It now reads that if you're decreasing intensity or density within the urban growth boundary, which is, of course, where we provide water and sewer and want efficient use of our city resources, I think that at the last cap discussion last week, there was a distinct price tag to the city on a fiscal level between effective denser urban development and suburban development on a per-unit basis. But if you're outside the urban growth boundary and it's going to have a huge issue on is the resiliency of infrastructure, that that's where another major plan amendment category might come into play. We're going to keep the urban growth boundary expansions as a major plan amendment. And then also, we want to make sure that people are not spot zoning corridors, so urban and suburban corridors. We want to make sure they actually have access to an arterial or collector because that's the intent of that district. And then also, we put decreasing the area of parks, open space, and federal lands and working landscapes. So, I know earlier in the meeting, you were talking about your letter to our congressional about selling federal lands. This is the way the plan is supporting keeping our federal lands public, is that if you, let's say they were sold, if it's shown on our map as federal lands and working landscape, changing them to anything in the city except public forest, public facilities, and public open space requires a major plan amendment. So, that's another way we've sort of built that contingency into the plan. And then deletion of a goal or policy, which is why when we're looking at number four for major and minor plan amendments, that if you are actually going to delete instead of request the exemption, it could bump you into a major plan amendment. Any questions on that? I just wanted to tie that little loose end together. So, from these examples and the very deep dive down the planning rabbit hole with us tonight, the things I want the take-home points to be is that are currently, we have these broad and very flexible findings of conformance, and what that has led to in our current plan is 10 to 20 pages that cover every applicable goal and policy. Thinking about writing the plan in a way that would let us update these findings could more specifically call out what parts of the plan, plan different decisions need to conform with. Narratives for the more simple amendments could be brought down to five or six pages. I actually ran up some samples of this in preparing this presentation, and I was able to get five pages on a simple zoning code amendment, which would, I know you all value your time and would like smaller packets, me too. That also is good use of staff time, more writing is more time. And then narratives for projects requiring plan amendments, those could be longer. You'd, you'd get a chance to make those distinctions if we start organizing the plan and thinking through updating these findings this way. And the benefits, again, would be this streamlined process for projects that don't require a plan amendment that are coloring in the lines, and so, we're going to not let them get away with no analysis, but it would be more simplified, more organized, and shorter staff reports, and clearer expectations that we can share with applicants at the front end of the process when it's easy to make changes. And as Councilmember Matthews made my best point very well, less time spent back and forth over review and over what everything means. Again, the current plan makes us use our goals and policies and land use as the real analysis, and land use is mostly used for screening. Moving to our proposed plan and thinking through having quick updates to the code findings afterwards would let us really get the land use framework back in the center, which was the intent of the state statute. The policies in our current plan applied, are applied directly to all cases, and sometimes they're a poor fit, and it's hard to explain how to even discuss different ones. Or sometimes developers will write up a description of how, ooh, this is very exciting, the computer is unhappy. I know that IT is already aware of this. Try it one more time. Sorry. I'm going to close all the other PowerPoints, if you'll just give me a minute, that were from previous presentations. Maybe that will free up some memory and make it less upset with us. Sorry for the pause. So, the other thing about the current plan is it really has no priorities. All 500 are weighted equally. The revised plan would have two core priorities and four complementary priorities, which really gives you a lot to sink your teeth into of, are we moving forward on priorities? Are we making a meaningful impact? I also think we could change the format of your, your findings and analysis from this college essay style that you've got now, which was the legislative intent, to maybe a more short-form worksheet or something that has some limitations to it. So, hopefully, that will assist. Any other questions and feedback about this? There's two other little parts that we need to talk about, and I don't know if we want to take public comment in spaces or we want to get all the way to the end, so I want to check in.
Let's take it all the way to the end, but first, council, do you have any questions or comments? All right.
All right. Then we have two quick check-ins, Mayor, and from the retreat. The first is, staff has spent some time, given the direction from the May 2nd retreat, discussing the request from Little America to consider a hospitality overlay on the future growth illustration, and we've had several meetings with them. I've also been researching resort land uses and overlays in Phoenix and Sedona and the county and other places. And many of these are identified in zoning code, but not in the regional plan or general plan map. But Phoenix does have what they call resort overlay, which is just an R on their future land use map, that they use to symbol existing resorts, essentially, and future resorts. The way that the planners in Phoenix described it to me, and I was talking to their village planners, was that they consider a resort a commercial use, and so, if you're in a commercial land use category, you don't need the R, but if you were in a residential category and you were adding a resort, they would add the R as part of your requested map amendment. Resorts are a use that we really don't have or allow for in our zoning code. They are like a travel accommodation, yes, but they have some specifics to them that other codes include that we don't. So, if we wanted to do something like what Phoenix did, we, the county has a resort community zone, and there is one area called Village Camp out in the Belmont area that essentially is a resort community. So, we would do something like this. We would just put an RC on the map and say, this is a resort community in the future or currently. Little America's property has two current land use categories, future land use categories on it, suburban corridor, and this is where you can cross-reference with your table, and then, which it's the orange, and then suburban neighborhood, which is the yellow in the south half of their property. So, why are resorts interesting and unique? If you pull up the code from Coconino County, you'll see there's kind of several criteria for resort community. One is, it allows you to take the same building and switch out whether a unit, think of the inside room, is a dwelling unit or a hotel room or a guest room. And it does that interchangeably in the way it calculates density. That is also how travel accommodations in Sedona and Phoenix Resort Hospitality Zone calculates density. We don't allow that kind of density calculation anywhere in our code. So, that is something we don't do. Other jurisdictions do. Adding an RC to the map in the regional plan would probably indicate that you want staff to work on that kind of land use being created in the plan or in the zoning code. It would not, as we said with previous applications and examples, not automatically create that land use. We would have to create the land use. The county already has it, we do not. So, that, another thing that they always have is an open space requirement. That's not like our resource protection overlay, but like, here's how much of your property has to stay an open space, and they might allow recreational uses, and then they might list exactly what they allow in that kind of open space. So, it really is like an interesting thing for the, the property owner at Little America to raise because it is something that our, our partner in this process, Coconino County, has and uses, and we just do not. So, interesting to consider. So, the, the way we would propose to address it in the plan would just be to add that resort community RC, put one in the county where they have a resort, put one in the city where we have a resort potentially in the future, and then make adding a new resort community a minor amendment. So, I had to explain all that first hour and a half of information for these four slides, I know, to make a good amount of sense on what they might imply. There was a payoff here. So, this is, this is something, if you direct us to do this, this is like our follow-up from, I think, the feedback that Councilmember Aslan and Matthews said, which is, go figure out how to be flexible. What is the flexibility that's needed here? And it did take some digging of what is it compared to other codes that we aren't allowing currently.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. If you're up for comments at this point, generally, I'll share with you some of my gut reactions to this. First of all, I want to, I want to thank you for taking that, that request and running with it so well. What I really wanted to do was, was make sure we turned over every rock to see if there is a way to fulfill Little America's desire to, to, to keep their, their density potential a little higher without defaulting to buy right one unit per acre, I think. This, this makes me uncomfortable. I'm not entirely ready to give a thumbs up on this, this new overlay. That's, it's a very large area, and I think we want, we want housing there. We want Flagstaff residents. We want people who are in town to be able to find new opportunities for homes and to build that housing continuum. This, to me, just at the gut level, makes me feel like that's threatened. I don't know that we want to take what little of such valuable land we have left within the city of Flagstaff for housing and certainly, not give it away, but, well, you know, just redesignate it as, as a resort. At the end of the day, I think what we want is housing, not resorts. So, that's a, maybe a overly simplistic way to look at it, but that's where I'm thinking right now, and if, if I'm, if I'm completely confused and mistaken, I, I totally invite you to, to correct my, my misunderstandings.
Councilmember Aslan, thank you. I think that the, the piece that's maybe, that I learned in doing this further research is that this flexibility lets, of having a resort use, does allow for hotel rooms to be converted to something that could be housing. There is an example in Phoenix of a, a resort area where you actually can buy your little condo, and it's yours if you want to live there full-time, but if you're living there part-time, like, a third of households in Flagstaff are, then you might be able to have like a concierge short-term rental, like, the hotel is actually renting it out for you, like, the Airbnb and managing it for you in your absence. And there, so there's, there's just a lot of models that are not as simple as a hotel room and a dwelling unit. And that's what I think the flexibility that resort land uses allow, that we don't currently have a mechanism to allow is. So, I don't know that it's as simple as like, these are never a housing unit, because they could be a housing unit for a part-time or full-time person who's bought into the resort, maybe because they're empty nesters or whatever reason that works for them. So, it's, it's not as clean as I think that it might appear on first impression. And that's why the plan can't go into really any detail on this. It would just be, do we want to designate this parcel that way? We could also just put an act, we also wanted to put in maybe an action item that says, we need to look into modern resorts and our requirements and dig a little deeper into this as a zoning code issue, regardless of whether you put an RC anywhere on the map. It's definitely taught us that there's something there that is maybe, maybe it's an innovation, maybe it's not, but we might need to look at it more. So, you can kind of look at those as, you can do them together or not, but that's what staff came up with in following up on the remarks from May 2nd.
Councilmember Matthews, then Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Sarah, is there, like, my memory serves me, maybe not because it's getting late, the conversations that Little America has said was, their concern was, they did not want to be restricted to their whole four or 500 acres, whatever they have, to one type of development. They wanted, I understood it, that they want to do housing, maybe even workforce housing, but they also want to do this resort-style living that are the condos, concierge service and stuff, and have that flexibility that they could get if it was zoned like that. I never got the impression that they wanted to do all of their acreage to that. They just wanted to have that mixed use. So, whether I'm correct or not in my understanding, is there, are there some guardrails that we could put in to, once a development plan came to us, we could say, you know, we could put restrictions on it to say, you, you know, you can only have up to X amount of units on the resort-type housing, and the rest has to go to regular housing. And I know right now, their zone, you know, R1 or whatever it is where it's one unit per acre, and we definitely don't want that either, right? We don't want to force that. So, is, is there some flexibility in this where we could have a little bit of all that they're looking for?
Councilmember Matthews, I think that, I, you'll, I think when we get to public comment, I believe that there might be someone here representing Little America who might want to speak, and if there is, then I'd let them answer questions about their specific plans. But I think that the, the issue becomes, is that flexibility commercial or residential? And will, we have no zone that really allows the full mix of things that you would see in a modern resort. So, there, there would have to be a zoning code update before we could really get to this kind of use. And I think that's where you would set the guardrails. You would take into account the 80 or so policies and say, how do we make a resort that is this thing that is maybe partially commercial and partially residential, but not quite like mixed use is defined in the current plan, in our current zoning code? How do we make that work in light of all the policies? But I think you would do that at the text amendment step before you see a development proposal. And maybe they, the property owner might come in with that proposal, but we, we would need to do some code updates. The plan would not get you there, other than it has goals and policies that could guide that discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I, I felt some hesitancy around this for a while, and I'm wondering, I don't know, like, if, if this is really a question so much, it's just a comment, but I kept going back to the plans that were proposed by Little America back in 2013, I think, when they were talking not about a resort, but talking about the development of the Little American neighborhood. And part of my hesitancy is in the shift that we see. And part of my hesitancy is in the shift that we see in, in what's potential under a resort community versus what's possible under a neighborhood plan or a master-planned community. And so I, I don't think that's something that I'm, like I'm, I'm not posing it as a question because I don't want to put you on the spot to try and answer for that. But I think that's part of where my, my hesitancy comes in is in not fully grasping that shift in ideology and the implications of, of one over the other for the community. Again, just going back to the discussion that was in, in 2013, and this was long before I, I had any involvement with council, but looking at that conversation and the excitement around the idea of developing the Little American neighborhood and, and that sort of master-plan community, it involved a lot of community input and, and conversation around community needs in, in terms of water preservation, affordable housing, all of those different things, open space and, and so forth, economic development. And now with this plan, I, I just feel like I'm not seeing that same level of either the community engagement or those sorts of plan or commitments. So I, I think for me, part of what I'd be looking for is further conversation with Little America and, and as part of the overall conversation about what that shift has, has been. Obviously, 2013 is a long time ago now. It might not feel that way, but it definitely is. That's 12 years. But I just wonder, like, what would it take to get us back towards that sort of concept versus the idea of a resort? Especially in terms of balancing the idea of what a, a resort typically looks like or, or means in a community like ours with those, the, the goals that we have and the two overarching goals that we have, how that idea of a resort really fits into those, those goals.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, great job in doing what you're doing. You just keep on answering the questions and figuring out stuff. If you need to take a big, deep breath and stretch out, feel free to do this while I pose a very brief question. I was wondering, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant too, just on the wording, resort community and the fact that we're making this kind of capitulation in a time where we can, but what does that mean for the rest of the community? And I guess the question is, is there a zoning code that could address these issues without necessarily being RC-zoned or putting that into our framework moving forward?
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. That is a good question. When I was speaking with the planners from Phoenix, they actually said they have a resort hospitalities zone that's much like the resort community zone that Coconino County has. They also have a planned area development zone, which is a way that you, which Coconino County actually also has this. They call it their planned community zone. But you basically get to customize your zoning, doing a planned community zone. Or a, or a PAD, as it gets called, like a PAD or a PUD very often. But you can like write your code for your property and then it shows up as PUD on our map and we, that tells a planner, this is not like every other place. It has its own custom zoning that has been negotiated and legislated through council. So the, that is a process that most places also use to solve this problem. So it could be an alternative path. And that's why I think that there's a desire to acknowledge that maybe there's something here that needs to be done and the intent that parts of the Little America property will be continuing to develop as the resort, but also not travel accommodations as we think of them today. So that's the, but maybe we choose one of those paths. I don't think the plan chooses that path. I think that's the kind of conversation where Tiffany Antol, the zoning code manager, should be up here offering thoroughly researched alternatives. Consider my presentation, the concept level work.
Thank you for having the concept level up because that's what inspires those bigger conversations and I like the PUD better than the RC.
I'm wondering what, i- i- if you've spoken to anyone who served on the Regional Plan Committee about how they feel about taking a different direction with, given all the public comment that has gone into the plan thus far. And that's not to say that I'm opposed to doing something different. I'm just wondering whether you've had any conversations with any, and I know we have at least two in this room.
Mayor Daggett, the committee completed its work in March and we told them we would not bring them back together necessarily, once we got to the point of having the retreat with all of you. So I've not polled them or gone back out to them or asked them about this since this was a late, I would call this a late arriving issue, but a good one because it showed us something we had not examined closely. We have not gone back out in that manner. And the timing of getting this to hearings in time probably don't give us the time to like reconvene the committee necessarily. And that's why we came back to a second work session with you to talk about it because Coconino County has all these tools already in their toolbox. It's the city that is missing, well, not missing, but we have not included those tools in our zoning code, recently at least, since 2011. And so that's, that's why we kind of brought it here to this room for that conversation. But yeah, is it, is it risky that there hasn't been a lot of public dialogue about it? I mean, it'll be, it'll mean it's a topic we'll want to highlight and discuss during the hearings if you want us to move forward with this.
And let me make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So you're, you're saying among the alternatives that we have, there is either the RC and another would be essentially like a specific plan for the, for this area?
Mayor Daggett, we do currently use specific plans, a little bit like PUDs. They're very odd-fit and they don't do everything that a PUD does, but we, we kind of hybridize them for private development to make up for that like gap in what we offer. I mean, I think the, the proposal staff has, and we, we can have public comment before we finalize our discussion of it, is that there are ways to address this. We would just like to capture them in the plan, whether they're on the map or just in action items, so that they're on the to-do list for us to come back.
Okay. Do you have anything else besides this?
Yes, one more. One more little thing. This is very short slides, though. So at 13, treat council requested some changes to the trails map that show more general symbology for future trails. So we've broken the map, I'm going to show you, into two things. We've showed planned trails with and without property rights. And then we've also identified that large properties need more flexibility to realign trails across their property. And so we've given properties over 400 acres an even more generalized feature. One thing I want to say about it, and I'll do it after I show it to you, is, is you'll see that they kind of become very background. So the, the dark lines are the ones of it's an existing foots. We own it, we manage it, it's built. The purple dash line are planned trails with existing property rights. So we have this property right, but we have not yet built the trail. The yellow ones are planned trails on private land with no property rights. Some of those are existing trails and some of them are not, depending on, on where we are with them. And then the planned trails on private land over 400 acres with no property rights are kind of these gentle shapes, I would say. And one of the things that was brought up, and I think Councilmember Matthews discussed it, was like whether or not this data, which we've very carefully symbolized, can be downloaded and popped on to like all trails or Strava. We can, if we turn these lines that are very soft into a polygon. I'm trying to think of how to describe it. When, when you create a polygon, so a shape in GIS, it, it is anchored by a centroid, so just a single point. You can't use polygons to run navigation algorithms. You can use linear features. So you can draw a really long skinny polygon that has no ability to be navigated on by a different device. We haven't turned these soft fuzzy lines into centroided polygons yet, but we could. It is, it would be a, I would not have us do it on every yellow dash line because it will actually require a GIS staff person drawing little points and creating a polygon from scratch. But can we make it so these bigger, softer lines can't be downloaded and reused in a way we didn't intend? Yes, with several days of staff time.
To speak to that point, but can't somebody just go on to these kind of like socially-created sites and just put the trail in that they navigated through and then save it on the site and then it just, it seems pointless?
It is true that if, if you turn on your Strava app and go on a run or go on a bike ride, it creates navigable points. It's, that is true. But you can't download official city data and try and turn it into that, is what we could offer. And also, we tried to, on the Little America and John Wesley Powell area, which includes Symmetries STL 405 and Juniper Point, we also tried to straighten them out so they couldn't be a line on the ground you could follow. Like, some of them would take you off the, an unnavigable edge.
Yeah, no, no, not a problem. I just, the, the point with that would, would be that we're not the ones encouraging people to go out and use those trails that are not yet obtained, you know, property rights and things like that. People may be doing it on their own, but it's not coming from, there's not a city liability tied to it.
I understand that clearly now and I wanted to highlight that point. Thank you very much.
So I guess the question will be, do you have feedback on the Sweet Mandino solution?
How about we take public comment and then come back to our discussion of the two last items? Michelle James.
Different angle. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Michelle James. I'm Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. After reviewing the agenda packet material for this item, F-Cube is concerned about the newly proposed applications of density in the regional plan and also the request for hosp, for a hospitality overlay by Little America. We're concerned that the proposed density in the suburban neighborhood category within the urban growth boundary is too low at five units per acre. What then would be the incentive for developers to build at a higher density than this? Why not use a higher minimum number to achieve the amount and variety of housing we want? F-Cube does not support the inclusion of the, in the regional plan of a hospitality or resort overlay for any or all of the 536 acres owned by Little America. We don't believe the voters will support this either. This proposed overlay would provide an exception from the regional plan standards for one landowner, allowing them to not meet the priority needs of our city. Flagstaff has a housing and climate cross crisis, not a hospitality crisis. Little America, just like all landowners, should be required to go through the public zoning amendment process if proposing development that their current zoning prohibits. An exception should not be made. Council may or may not be familiar with the development proposals submitted by one of the larger landowners, another large landowner in the JW, JW Powell area, and that's Symmetry. Their planned expansion of Pine Canyon proposes two golf courses and a resort. It appears that this, these large greenfield developments will not supply the type of housing Flagstaff desperately needs. We encourage the city to work with all the landowners in the JWP, JWP area to alleviate at least some of our housing needs. I think that gets back to what, what Austin brought up as well. We, we need something besides a resort out there. The city needs that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Charity Lee.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Charity Lee with Capstone Homes. Capstone Homes is one of the largest landowners and developer in Flagstaff. I'm here to express my opposition to a minimum of five dwelling units per acre in this suburban neighborhood. Suburban areas have medium to low densities of people, residents, jobs and activities. The current regional plan has a density range from two to 29 dwelling units per acre. This density range provides flexibility in development, especially when developing property that is impacted by protected resources, such as slopes, rural floodplains and trees. The regional plan would be in effect for 10 years, increasing the minimum dwelling units per acre to five could have unintended consequences resulting in fewer units developed. For example, there are over 1,200 acres privately owned in the city limits zone, rural residential, and in the suburban neighborhood. Capstone and its partners own 700 of these acres. Rural residential is one dwelling unit per acre. These owners may elect to rezone their properties to a higher zoning category to maximize the dwelling units per acre. However, if the regional plan has set a minimum of five dwelling units per acre, which is difficult or impossible to achieve, an owner would not rezone and, excuse me, and instead build by right. This would bring only a fraction of the dwelling units to the market. Additionally, if the rezoning process is too cumbersome and expensive and lengthy, a developer won't rezone, which will result in loss of the units. I would urge the city council to keep the minimum dwelling units per acre at two for the suburban neighborhood and simplify and streamline the process. A range from two to 40 dwelling units per acre provides the most flexibility with development without creating unintended consequences. Thank you.
Charity, I have a question for you.
Sure.
What are the elements that make developing at a minimum five difficult?
Well, as I suggested, you know, you have a lot of challenges, especially with properties along the JWP corridor. You have topography, resource protection. That property also has the rural floodplain to consider. So there's a lot of challenges there. I understand that staff is working to make changes to the reason, the resource requirements. However, those aren't proven yet. And so if you adopt policies based on ideas to implement to change resource requirements, those aren't proven, so we don't know if they're actually going to be impactful and create the additional density that you're achieving. So to make those changes now and increase the suburban neighborhood to five dwelling per unit, units per acre without actually having case studies to base it on is, I think it's irresponsible.
Thank you. Marilyn Wiseman.
Hi, Marilyn Wiseman, also with F-Cube. I want to add and reiterate to some of the things that Michelle said, but first I want to thank the comments, Austin, your comments in particular, and Kara. I, I think this really is an 11th hour request on the part of Little America and I'm a little bit flabbergasted that we have to be here to discuss this without it having even been vetted in any of the public meetings. Sarah talked about the trails, but it was my understanding that Little America's request was to completely eliminate the trails shown on their map. Is that correct? Was that their request? Yeah. And so she didn't really bring that up. She was talking about some faded kind of thing. So I didn't really understand what that solution is, but I, I just want to oppose any elimination of trails. Trails are showing our intent to a developer that, okay, if you're going to develop this, you have to understand there's going to be trails. It's not necessarily where we're showing them, but we want to put them in there. So I, I do think that we should show trails where we want them to be and we can put the coda that, just like state lands, that it's not, it's not the actual location, but it's an intent. The other thing I wanted to talk about is obviously the request for the resort overlay. As their land is currently zoned rural residential, currently they need to go through the rezon process and justify to the public why a resort on 500 acres is the best use of this land for our community. This overlay idea disrupts that public process by having our regional plan essentially pre-approve a resort at that location. The regional plan support for a resort on this land could very well lead to a public vote against this regional plan if it includes an overlay like this. And this also applies, I don't know if you recall, on the map south of Little America, there's this little brown circle, and that's on the Symmetry land. And so I think it also applies to the designation located on that map, which was at the request of Symmetry because they want to also have a course and golf course. So it's looking like it's not just 500 acres that we're taking out of our housing market, but probably over 1,000 acres. By that, I mean, there might be housing, but it's not going to be housing that's attainable and part of our goal. So I'm just asking our community, we're asking our community to change the nature of our own neighborhoods, our existing neighborhoods, to demeet demands of our housing and climate crisis. We should be asking the same of our second homeowners and tourists. They're, they're just as subject to these rules as we are. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary Norton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I didn't actually come with prepared comments. I came to listen and learn, not only as a citizen, but as far as my positions on two commissions. I don't know about you, but my brain hurts tonight. And, but I do like a lot where this has been going, except the resort hospitality overlay and the trail delineation. And I'm going to use Councilmember Aslan's example. It allows coloring outside the lines. I didn't get in, I didn't hear if the 400 acres sole land ownership is still a trigger. So I'm wondering if that is still in effect or if this is just for Little America? Because others are going to want it too. And if this isn't just Little America, it would apply to all of those other landowners south of the 40. They all own ironically 405 acres or more, and that's no coincidence. That area is the limited developable land in Flagstaff. The area makes up a whole quadrant of our city. This sort of thing would reward land, large landowners. It acquiesces to the current owners in a 15-year regional plan. If we want a clear framework, and that is our regional plan, we need the assurances of sensible infrastructure, community services, open space parks and housing. We don't get that by watering down and loosening land use and trail designations, nor by creating a hospitality resort overlay. Making two categories for trail designations based on parcel size of 400 acres, while I'm sure it's intended for flexibility. That's exactly what we need, are the assurances on large parcels that we're going to have trail connectivity and access and an abundance of trails within those parcels. So I, being a part of that regional plan retreat on May 2nd, I'm in favor of the Sweet Mandino proposal back in, on those days where it was just a dotted line across par, private parcels, and it's not creating two subcategories of 400 acres or more or 400 acres or less. So I've, you know, I've been involved in the regional plan from the beginning as a concerned citizen, as well as being on a commission. And I have to say, it really pains me to say that the changes of a hospitality overlay or these trails could be a deal breaker for me in supporting the regional plan. And I really feel that the citizens would feel the same way once this goes through. And it's really not fair to all the work that's been done to throw this wrench in at the last minute. I, I don't think it's the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's take our online public commenters.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Our first online commenter was, is going to be Nick Wood. Nick, you can go ahead and offer your comments now.
Thank you. Mayor, Members of the Council, Nick Wood, Snell and Wimmer, One East Washington Street, Phoenix, and I represent Little America. I think, number one, I want to thank staff. They've, as usual, done a wonderful job. They've been working with us, spending a lot of time and helping us work through our issues. I think there's been some confusion, and, and I hope maybe I can clear it up. I've been a land use attorney for almost 45 years, so I can understand how confusion can happen in these discussions. There's a bright blue line between what a general plan, on this case, you call it your regional plan, what it does versus what zoning creates. A regional plan doesn't give a property owner the right to do anything. There's no overlay that allows them to build out a big resort without any zoning. There's no grant of, of density rights, for example. Basically, all it is, is a, is a snapshot, if you will, of what land use design and plans and density and intensity and land uses will be in the coming decade, 10 to 15 years, for example. We cannot have a situation that says we have to have a minimum of five dwelling units per acre. Reason is, it would be great to be able to do a master plan zoning application like a PUD. I actually did the PUD for the Arizona Biltmore Resort in Phoenix, and the PUD is a zoning case, which has to come to council, which has to be vetted by the community. But if we have a minimum density of five dwelling units per acre, for example, and we want to do a master plan on all 500-plus acres, we would have to either get a major general plan amendment, as shown on slide number 33 of the presentation, and a major general plan amendment is not going to happen in the coming years because of all the work that's been put into this general plan. So we have to have a minimum of two dwelling units per acre standard for ours. But no matter what we do, no matter what the plan may be in the future, it all has to come back to you as far as a zoning case. So we're not being granted anything here. There's no overlays, et cetera. But right now, we have one dwelling unit per acre zoning. And if, if we are in a situation where we can't do anything else, then that's unfortunately where Little America will have to proceed. But again, I just wanted to clarify the distinctions, that we don't get anything out of this other than the ability to avoid a major general plan amendment.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Jim Hill. Jim, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Daggett and City Commissioners, who appreciate your, your time and, and service. I'm, I'm Vice President of Development with Grand America Hotels and Resorts. It's the parent company for Little America. I just want to, I guess, echo both what, what Charity said and what Nick said. I would ditto, ditto both of those comments. We've been trying, I guess, to, to, over the past year, I, I know this carve-out ideas may be relatively recent, but we've been very vocal and very involved for over a year now, trying to express our concerns and look for ways that keep us away from a collision course. I think, I think the unintended consequences are very real, that it puts us, i- if this proceeds with five, a five-unit minimum on our property, I think it's very unlikely we're going to do that. And it, and it puts us on the horns of a dilemma. It's either go with your one, one unit per acre or five. And I don't see any appetite from our ownership to do five. And, and I think there could be potentially all kinds of creative solutions, which we would need to, you know, bring through the public process in a rezoning. But we're, we're trying to, to, to allow that flexibility to happen so that that conversation can happen and we don't all, at this stage, kind of limit the opportunity set. Also, just a little bit of background, Councilmember House, you were referencing 2013. We had, as a company, during that era, we, we went, went through some rezonings throughout our portfolio. The Holding family owns Sun Valley Resort in Idaho, Snow Basin in Utah. We were successful at that time at creating some, some PAD or PUD zoning in Morgan County, Weaver County, Utah, and Ketchum, Idaho. All of that gave us, you know, confidence in order to encourage the company to then invest in some places that have become frankly like world-class, top-rated resort properties. And, and I guess it, it discourages us probably to, to not have any kind of a pathway forward that, that would encourage that kind of, you know, continued investment in, in Little America. So, again, I thank you all for your time. I know this is very complicated and it's late, and we appreciate staff and the, the chance to keep working with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hillary Turby. Hillary, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Hillary Turby. I'm the Director of Entitlements with Symmetry Companies. I'm here tonight to comment on the proposed regional draft plan, specifically the four proposed density ranges. I was specifically concerned in the last few days about the, specifically meeting both the zoning district requirements and the, and the regional plan category density requirements. But I guess as Sarah just described probably about an hour ago, it's more of an either/or situation, which definitely helps with the development side. But in case I'm getting that wrong, I'll just run you through a scenario about how that would not work with the development side. So you take the current draft of the plan. It would require a rural residential property that lies within the suburban neighborhood category that may want to rezon to R1 to meet the density standards of the medium-density housing category, which ranges from five to 14 dwelling units per acre. Now, if you look at all the available land within Flagstaff, much of that property is currently zoned in rural residential, which would need to be rezoned and is within resource protection overlay zones. Once you layer that requirement of the overlay onto the property, even if you're building a townhome product, it's nearly impossible to meet that five dwelling units per acre on a densely forested and steeply sloped property. Now, I understand that staff currently has the pilot program to address the resource challenges, but as many have brought up, both in this meeting and in different public hearings, developers are going to be reticent to sign up for this program as it reduces the certainty and predictability of a product, of a project. At least with the current resource standards, there are objective criteria that can be met with some certainty. With the pilot program, a developer is having to go into the process blind. Now, as Shane Phillips writes in his book, The Affordable City, and even as Sarah mentioned tonight, there are few things simpler and more effective at reducing housing costs than cutting down approval times and creating objective consistently applied rules. Affordable cities are those where housing is predictable, boring, leal, yo, low-yield investment, not a roll of the dice. I would just finish by saying that we would recommend by taking away the density minimums and instead advocate for maximums and provide for more flexibility in real-world situations.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was our last online commenter.
Thank you. Sarah, can you remind us of the timeline and and whether we have to give direction on these two items tonight?
Mayor Daggett, yes, I need direction on these items tonight. I have one week left to put my pen down on the plan, essentially, and be able to make our hearing timeline without making adjustments to it, which includes a special meeting for council adoption on October 9th. So, let me, but let me go back and see if I can clarify something again, because it was, it's a long presentation. I took you all the way through the weeds. But there was something that came up consistently in public comment that I want to just address. So while, I, I think this is where I get back to the, I said this is, these two columns in the center are an or, not an and. So if a developer, if this is what we adopted, and a developer in the urban growth boundary wanted to develop three dwelling units per acre, they would simply opt into the R1 category, which allows that as a compatible zone. They do not then also have to meet the medium-density requirement of five dwelling units or more. And that is why we left the R1 zone in the existing compatible categories for suburban neighborhood. So I think that's a misunderstanding in, in some of the comments you heard. There, this would not take that ability away. Unless, at some future date, council raises the minimum density in the zoning code and does things like address the resource protection overlay. But those are zoning things to do down the road. We'd still have the ability to work in an interim period more flexibly. Is that helpful?
It is. And I'm seeing nodding from people that that is helpful. Councilmember Garcia.
I just had a quick comment. I, I, I met with Little America, and I don't know however, however, how many other council members met with them, but it was, uh, I didn't know what I was getting into. I was fairly new to the council, and I'll never take a meeting with a developer again without at least Sterling hanging out with me during the, during the thing. And so I think it's fair to be able to say what was said during that meeting. I've mentioned that I thought that the trails that they had on their property should be, should be free-range until they were developed over because the people of Flagstaff have used them up till now. I thought that that was important. I also told them very bluntly that they showed up to the regional planning process way too late, and where were they a year and a half ago? They could all remember me saying that because I said those exact words, because I was part of the process. And I was like, what is going on here? For a developer to jump in at the last minute and be like, yeah, that's, these are the changes that we need right now? That's not fair to any of the other developers that didn't have that opportunity, in my opinion. And I'm sad because they closed down the trails for the, for the public on land that isn't developed yet. Also, it, I, I felt, not necessarily brow-beaten, but it was just an uncomfortable meeting to have a developer and all their lawyers sitting there and telling me what, what I should think about things without also having my own support. So I'll never take that meeting, type of meeting again. As far as the RC is concerned, if it was, again, you know, like I stated before, if it was RC, I would take the PUD over the RC all, all the time because there's more of a process to it. And I think that that kind of model could, is more, would be more effective to working with council and working within the community to get feedback on the process. But I'm not comfortable with the RC label, period.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, our, our speakers that were concerned about the, the density minimums and stuff with the resource protection overlay still pending were valid. Thank you for the clarification, Sarah, on the either/or. Because one thing, though, that, you know, it's late and we're all brain-dead, and none of us up here that I know of are experts in planning and zoning. And so, you know, I've said- And so, you know, I've said this to you and some of the other groups, that this is a huge burden for us as policymakers to have to bring ourselves up to speed and understanding unintended consequences of something that sounds great on paper when somebody's presenting it to us in a manner to receive the answer that they want us, they want us to give them without understanding, you know, what the consequences are. And at the end of the day, we do need housing. And what I've heard since I've been on council is we make it very difficult to incentivize or encourage developers to build us more housing. So those things I worry about. I like seeing in this presentation that you've kind of consolidated and simplified some things because it still feels very complicated, but I don't know what other regional plans in Arizona look like and if they're that intense. Maybe they are. I like the PUD or the PAD concept. I'd like to discuss that further and give it some, maybe some public input. On the trails, I have a little different take on it. When it's private property, I mean, I don't have 500 acres, but I would not want people just cutting through my property thinking that it was, I pull up AllTrails because I do a lot of hiking, and when they're on AllTrails, I think that it's meant to be, that I can be, it's on AllTrails, then this must be something that I have the right to do. But it's not. When it's private property, it's private property, and I know they had a fire there because of illegal camping and some other things that just make it more challenging and at risk to their property and their guests when there's people just utilizing their acreage, their private property. And we do have the Arizona Trails going through there, and they've been very open about saying, of course, you know, the Arizona Trails will continue through there. But, you know, I think that property owners should have property rights, and even though I, when I hike up the Observatory Mesa, there has been trails that have been made by people, and there are signs, you know, Lobos Observatory has asked, "Don't go on these trails." And we're still kind of trekking through those, and it affects their environmental, you know, protection up there because people are walking on and making trails that they shouldn't make, and it's affecting the mountains and stuff. So I think that us making it to where these trails, yes, you're going to walk and see that they're been made by foot, but for us to make sure that they're not on AllTrails and stuff is a small ask, and I think it's reasonable. And I don't know that you should, we should split hairs and say, well, you have so many acres, we should have rights to all of your property and walk everything. I disagree with that. Can we stop people from hiking on these big acreage? No, but we shouldn't publicize it and have it accessible on apps like AllTrails and stuff. So that's all I have.
Yes?
So just to clarify, Sarah, we're giving direction on these last two items? Is that what you're needing direction on right now?
I think, I think that the direction that I'm looking for is, are you satisfied with the approach to dealing with zoning compatibility for future land use categories, which we had to walk through in great detail to make sure we'd put a light on all the dark corners? And then the second question is, should I, what should be done about the resort issue? One thing to point out about that is I heard two comments that there's a preference for the planned unit development or planned area development approach. That approach actually could serve a lot of different things and not just resorts. It's just that it's one way of addressing resorts. The options for that one, just to clarify them, sorry, I'll try and run through all my slides really quick and get there, is that we can put a mark on the map or not, and also that we could create some action items in Chapter 5 that talk about modernizing resort as a land use and travel accommodations and maybe even adding the planned unit development or not. And we could do both or just one, depending on your preference. And then the last question is, are we satisfied with the depictions of trails on the map or is there feedback or changes you'd want to that? Those are my three things I need clarity on.
Okay. So for me, in terms of everything that's been, that was presented at the first part of the presentation, I am in agreement with you on. So I would say keep plugging away in that same direction. For the resort question, I am definitely more in favor of looking at the text addition to, did you say Chapter 5? That would make reference to the planned unit development, PUD or PAD, whichever. And rather than focusing specifically on expanding that resort use, I think that concept is what's resulting in a lot of hesitancy from the community and also from myself. And I am in support of the trail map that you have here. I think that covers everything.
I'll jump in here. I agree with the map, and where would this be? So this would be included in the regional plan. Where else would it be available?
Mayor Diott, the regional plan will of course have like a paper or PDF version that's not interactive, but we would also create a web map that lets people interact with the data. And we usually also include it on the Open GIS portal so people can download it if they would like to, for use in preparation of their applications or research or anything else they need to use it for. So that's why the idea of having the ability to create the polygon is, it takes a little time, but it's not impossible. It could be done.
Okay. So I am in support of that. And in terms of the resort, I'm leaning more toward the PUD, PAD. And for a lot of the reasons that were stated here, and I think we cannot underestimate how this could undermine the entire regional plan with the voters. I think that that is a real possibility, and I think that we can figure out a different way to achieve the community's goals and also let Little America achieve what they're looking to do, at least partway. I mean, I think it's going to be some kind of a compromise, but I think that there is a better way to do it than the resort designation. And then the whole first part of your, I love this. I think that this makes it so much easier to understand. And were you planning on including examples in the regional plan?
Mayor Diott, I was planning to include them in the presentation during public hearings, but not include text examples in the plan per se because the zoning could change. We could, state law can change, and then we have to be thoughtful of this as a living document that might have some of this plan code relationship be a moving target.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and being so thorough. My head is swimming, but I really appreciate everything you've done to make this a successful night. So for number one, I'm a yes. For number two, I am also in favor of the text addition, looking at the PUD, PAD in Chapter 5. And then for three, the depictions of the trail, I am in support of, and obviously it is called the Sweet Pendino, so I hope it stays that.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry to ask this, but I know, I know it's late, but I need to get this right. So going back to the R1, the or? So in a suburban neighborhood, right now, an R1 allows for how, is minimum required how many units?
Two dwelling units per acre is the minimum density in the R1 zone.
And that's what's in the regional plan?
It is listed as a compatible zoning category. So if you came in, as we were talking through those other categories, and the owner requested to rezone to R1, we would not look at the future density column. So the five that was being discussed in the public comments wouldn't apply so long as they were clear they were moving to the R1 zone.
So just as long as, if they're in the suburban neighborhood zone and they picked, I want to move to the R1, then their minimum density is two?
Correct.
They don't have to do the low-density housing?
They don't have to achieve the medium of five dwelling units per acre. Correct.
All right, thanks.
So is there anyone who is in disagreement with the direction that's been given thus far? Are you all comfortable with?
Yeah, I'll just, I'm generally in agreement with that. A little confused on the Chapter 5 stuff. I don't think we should lower that. They do have the R1 option anyway. I don't know if that's different than what other people have been saying. That's my two cents. I'm all for centroid polygons. It's my new favorite term for today. I want to do a Jedi joke about these aren't the centroid you're looking for, but I can't, I can't figure out how to make it work.
The dad joke grown you just got. Less intense.
It's in there somewhere. It's incubating. So I think that makes it pretty clear for me. You know, I do, I do consider it a very serious concern, what we heard from some of our community members that have been involved in this process all the way from the beginning, that the hospitality overlay is a poison pill. I take that very seriously, and it guides my decision here because I do feel a little bit torn, and this is very specific to Little America, just because of the legacy they've had in town and how long they've been here. I maintain those feelings. So there is some conflict within me about that, but, you know, I'm hopeful that we can come up with something that works for them using the available processes that doesn't overly complicate what our goals and objectives are and what the people who drafted the regional plan have come up with.
Sarah, do you feel clear on direction?
Can I state it back to you because it is late and it helps if everyone nods when I say things? Okay. So my understanding is that on the density ranges, that I should leave them as they are drafted, low, medium, and high, and that there were no changes to how low, medium, and high were distributed on the table at this time, pending any other slight adjustments to existing compatible zoning categories. Is that correct? On the hospitality overlay resort question, the feedback was not to show the RC on the future growth illustration, but to make sure that in Chapter 5, we include an action item to include the planned unit development or planned development. The thing I don't have clarity on this is can I also leave in an action item or create an action item that talks about how resorts are something we have to look at in the future or explore, since it's kind of got that unique dwelling unit guest room interchangeability to it? Is that something you'd like? I mean, you could do that even if I don't write it in the plan, but would you like me to write that in the plan or not?
Councilmember Spence.
Am I correct in thinking that if Chapter 5 includes a paragraph about planned unit development, that a developer could come in and propose this flexibility that you've talked about that some other cities have? It could be part of their proposal, and it would come to the city council for approval?
I have not worked with a planned unit development code in Arizona, and so I believe that's true, but I think we'd have to verify it. Maybe Mr. Solomon can help.
Yeah, that's typically how it works. With a PAD or a PUD, it still comes to the council for approval. Yeah, it's, you're looking at a rezone for that specific area.
To my way of thinking, this would be in the category of a conditional use permit, wouldn't it?
The current planned residential development part of the code, which is not really a PUD or a PAD, is a conditional use permit, but a real PUD, a real planned unit development would come as its own zoning case. And let Michelle answer more.
I just want to clarify, actually, our planned residential development is how we do subdivisions. It's not a conditional use permit. So it's, that's how we do subdivision, so it's a type of subdivision. So the change that you'd be putting in Chapter 5 would be giving us the direction to create the zoning tool, to create that PUD, that then a developer could come in, and then that would be similar to the rezone process because it's actually creating a zone based on like a master plan idea for that property. So it goes through that same process.
Thank you. I think that certainly can go a long way toward meeting Little America's stated goal of having a development that is compatible with Flagstaff, and certainly the staff of Little America can read our new regional plan, can understand the goals and priorities that are set in that regional plan. And given this clarification in Chapter 5, I am confident they can come up with a development plan for their 400 acres that is compatible with the regional plan and will meet their owner's expectations. So I'm confident with leaving it at this point and not having the RC designation on a map.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, to your question about the language in Chapter 5, I personally, and I'm open to further counsel thought on this, but I would prefer just the PUD or PAD language, not the language on consideration of resort community. And my reasoning for that is that I think the PUD language would allow for that sort of flexibility for future conversation that would include potential for resort to consider that. But the resort community, it doesn't work in the reverse, in other words. And I don't want to have language in there that seems to be limiting or pointing towards us thinking of the idea of resort community as a community priority or anything like that, whereas the RUD or PUD language, my brain is gone, the PUD language... Whereas the RUD or PUD language, my brain is gone, the PUD language, I think, allows for that flexibility in thought and consideration into our future as our community needs might change.
Okay, then what I heard was just an action item on getting to a PUD or a pad process in the zoning code. Okay. And then the last thing is the trails map, and that just a verification that everyone is fine with this display and there's no other changes except making the lines polygons that won't even happen visually, it'll just be in the data side. All right. Thank you very much. I know that was a lot to explain. We got into some very nitty-gritty, but hopefully when we're at public hearings, you'll feel really confident that we got to the right place. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, I'd like to move us along, and I don't see any public comment. And council, are you all right with skipping number 12? Then we're adjourned.